Come forward and stand in front of that microphone and as soon as the clerk tells me to start, we're gonna go ahead and start. Alright, if everybody could please stand. Go ahead, we have Christian Cruz, Christian Flores, and Celeste Marquez of Davis Elementary School. They're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance here today. Please go ahead.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if you can remain standing, we have Ruben Esponda, our police chaplain, is gonna give us our invocation. So if you can step to the side, we're gonna have our police chaplain now speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Eternal and loving Father, first let me say thank you. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings for all of us. Thank you for the life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill all callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful works and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the government bodies since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various level of city officials, and in particular, for this assembly council. I am asking in the name of Jesus Christ that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of the welfare and true needs for our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fairing, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is a honest disagreement. Asking too for personal peace for all of us. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please, give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around or below Santana City. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, you may be seated. And I wanna call upon the council members Benavides and Reyna. We have a certificate of recognition to the Santa Youth and the Government Conference in Sacramento, so come on down if you were a part of that effort. And I'll turn things over to Councilor Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think we have some of our students. You can come actually right around and stand right here by my side here. So this is for students that are part of the Youth and Government Program here in the City of Santana. Throughout the state of California, one week of the year, we have our state legislature. Basically Sacramento sort of closed down for a week, if you will, and it's basically the capital's taken over by young people, primarily high school students from throughout the state. And it's a model legislature program where essentially amongst the students, there's I believe there's about 3,200 students from throughout the state that take part. Y'all can step up a little bit, a little bit closer, you don't have to be that. I know you all aren't that shy, so I don't know why you're pretending right now. But we have a couple, about 3,200 students throughout the state that take part. And amongst themselves, they elect, they run for office amongst those 3,200 students. So they elect a governor, they elect Secretary of State. In fact, one of our own ran for Secretary of State this last go-around. They run for the different positions of senators and assembly members and such. And it's something that is significant, takes a significant amount of investment on the part of the students, a lot of time and preparation. And I'm telling you a little bit, I actually have had an opportunity to go visit Sacramento a number of years ago. And Councilman Reyna is not here standing with me, even though he's here on the dais because he's been very much involved and actually has run the program. So wanted to give somebody else an opportunity to share about it. Obviously, he knows about the program because he's very much committed and is passionate about it. But as a, as somebody who hasn't necessarily been a participant or director or volunteer, but who has come in to observe, it's something that I was very moved by to see our students up in Sacramento, all dressed up, as you can see here, looking to the nines, sharp. They go through a process, actually, City Hall here, we open up on a Wednesday evening typically for them. What they do is they, each of the different delegations, Santana and all the different cities throughout the state, submit a bill that they come up with, that they design, and then present. There's actually a few bills that are presented from within the delegation itself, and they sort of come up here and they have to defend their position, their bill. And the delegation themselves, once they actually identify and select one bill amongst the city, then they go out and present that and argue for that bill up in the state. And one of the neat things that I came to find out, there are certain outcomes that have come out of the Youth and Government Program. I came to find out actually when I was up in Sacramento a few years ago, all of us currently are required to wear a seatbelt. And it's for safety purposes, and as I look up, our police chief turned, looked up as well. It's the law, right, and we get cited if we don't do that. So, but it is law, we're required to do that, it's a safety requirement. That actually came out from the Youth and Government Program. It was an idea that one of the delegations from within the state proposed. They presented it. Whichever is the winning bill, if you will, at the state conference then gets presented, actually introduced for consideration by the sitting actual governor and legislature. And one of those, at least one of those actually has gone through in the seatbelt bill. So a couple of things here, just briefly, kind of a little bit of background. In 2012, the program has operated in 37 of our states in the country, including the District of, and the District of Columbia. Forty-seven thousand students throughout the country take part. Here, the Santana delegation has 17 students from four different high schools. Four alumni are the current advisors that help support and guide the program. One of the neat things is, in addition to the program itself, this whole experience of learning how legislature works going up to the state and Sacramento, one of the reasons that we're recognizing them here today is because they just got back. About how long ago was it that you all were up there? Just five days ago you were out there? No, 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 when did you leave, when did you come back? When were you up there? It was last month, right? Last month. So they just came back, having, you know, again, represented our city up there. They did a phenomenal job. As I mentioned, one of them ran for Secretary of State. And I understand he gave a very impassioned speech and did a fabulous job at that. But in addition to being a part of the program, they also do a lot of volunteer work in the city. So I know for a number of years, our Independence Day event in July for the last, I think since its inception, about three years ago, the students have been a part of that. They've participated and volunteered in Easter egg hunts, movies in the park, Christmas posadas, just a number of different activities, just supporting and being engaged and involved and committing to the City of Santana. And just in a general, some of these statistics that stood out to me that I wanted to share with you so you could see the type of, level of impact that it has on our students. A study was done several years ago, which puts statistics behind the civic involvement of the alumni. The California Youth and Government Program showed that out of the, for example, registered voters, there's 96 percent of those students that have been involved in Youth and Government become registered voters versus the general population, which is 66 percent, then actually voting and taking part in the democratic process. It's amazing that only 54 percent of those that are eligible in the general population actually take part in voting, whereas Youth and Government, these students will, 87 percent, take part in that process. Working on community issues, almost half, 43 percent stay engaged, whereas general population, 17. Serving on members of different boards and such, 15 percent versus general, 3 percent. One of the most significant ones here is when it comes to education. They work hard to be a part of this program, and they continue with that commitment. Eighty-eight percent of students who have been a part of Youth and Government go on to receive a bachelor's degree, whereas only 25 percent of general students do. So this program's having a significant impact, again, on our young people here in Santana. I wanted to give one of you an opportunity to share a little bit about the direct impact that it's had on you and maybe your experience that you had last month up in Sacramento. Do we have any volunteers? Yeah, perfect. What's your name?
Martha. Hello, my name is Martha Gallo, from the Santana delegation and president of the program, of the delegation. And what can I say about Youth and Government? I started my freshman year, I started late, but I caught up and I learned so much through it. If you wouldn't have known me back then, I wouldn't be here speaking to you guys in front of an audience. I have grown so much because I went from that person in the back. Like, I would stay quiet, I would hope that other people will talk rather than me. Now, I'm always asking questions, no matter what, I'm standing up, I'm raising my hand. My grades went up, and I done so much community service throughout this two years. And in Sacramento, I got a chance to be in the appellate court. We defended a case, we worked about sexuality, about two people and adopting children. And then we just came back from Sacramento last month, and I was in media, and I was able to go in every program area that we have. appellate court, we have judicial review, and constitutional. We have every area that you can find there. It's not, you don't have to like government, but you learn there much more than just the government. You learn how to speak in front of people, you learn networking, which is, you get to speak to random strangers. They say, "Don't talk to strangers." But in this program, you do because you get to learn those skills that you are required to know when you're outside in the real world. You learn from the basics, just speaking to people that you know and to the people like in the audience. I seen each one of them grow since I've seen them each get involved in the program. They all been doing community service. As Benavides has once, he said previously, we do a lot of community service. We do from each event, like Fourth of July, Christmas. We're always there, out there, and you guys will always see us around there helping other people. We encourage students to join the program because you will grow so much that once you get involved, you will forget that you were timid in front of people. The program has also made the students here be more outspoken, get out of their shell, and they all have developed. And if you were to talk to each one of them, they'll tell you that they all have grown. And we're a big family together. We know each other, and we could relate with each other because of the community that we come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
You know, it takes a lot of courage to come out here and speak, even for the seven of us that are up there. You know, sometimes you get little sweaty palms and a little bit, you know, when you're trying to communicate a message. But, you know, she just stepped up and, you know, with confidence hit out of the ballpark. So thank you, Martha, for giving us that example of how you lose that timidity and you learn to speak. There's one of the students, Luis, who's alumni, who's volunteering, right? Why don't you come and share, you've come back, you went through the program, came back. Why don't you share with us why you continue to come back and answer as a volunteer?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luis Quintanilla. I was part of the S A Y delegation in 2009. Unfortunately, I only had, only was there for one year, but it taught me a lot of things for that one year. I was a really shy kid back in high school. Until I actually joined this program, it gave me traits of leadership. It made me get out of my shell. I was more productive in class, I moved on to bigger and better things now. Using the, using the tools that I learned from Youth and Government, I was able to actually now graduate from my current college, which is just OCC, and moving up to a four-year university. It took a lot of courage, and all the tools that this delegation taught me throughout the years, I kept with me. To be passionate about government, to be productive within your academics, to be productive within the community has been a part of me for so many years and shall continue to be with me for the years to come. I just wanna thank Roman especially, and these talented group of youths who I can see growing up since the first day I met them. Like, I met them when I kinda tore apart their bills a little bit. But just seeing them, they never gave up within their bills. They, I heard that they tried so hard in Sacramento, and I commend them for that. It takes a lot of courage for someone to actually just stand and talk in front of thousands of kids, let alone thousands and hundreds of adults. So, congrats to them, and just thank you to S A Y for giving me all the traits that have been a part of me for the past couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. So you have, I wanna thank also Councilman Reyna, you know, for your commitment, dedication for a lot of years. There's a lot of young people who have gone through the program and who have, you know, gone on to do a lot of, we have actually city commissioners now as well, and, you know, you've invested a lot of time, energy, and your efforts, and it's, you know, proven to be, to raising up leaders in Santana. So that's an amazing thing, we thank you for that dedication. Thank each of you, we congratulate each of you for your accomplishments, for representing us well up in Sacramento last year. And standing here before you, you have some of, you know, future mayors, council members, you know, assembly members, senators, governors, and so we, you saw them here first. So again, congratulations all.
Next is Councilor Michelle Martinez. I'll be the mayor for this evening.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I could please have Jonathan, please come up here. And I see all the explorers, they might as well join us. Please come on, Jonathan, where are you? Come on up. If you want your fellow camaraderies to come, ask them to join us if you'd like. They'll look good, they'll make me look good, right? They're all. As they all come up here, I have the great honor and privilege to, you know, present the certificate of recognition to Jonathan for his recognition for the Santana Police Department Police Explorers. He was number one in his class. And so let's give him another round of applause for that. So in partnership with the Boy Scouts of America, the Explorer Program provides young men and women the opportunity to study the field of law enforcement and community service at hand. The Explorer Program is a career development program which emphasizes academic study, character development, and self-discipline. Each year, the explorers contribute about 2,000 volunteer hours towards the study and community service to the police department and the City of Santa Ana. And I certainly want to thank them because we certainly do see them at many community events in the city. And wanted to thank all of you for your service, and really thank you for coming up here and supporting Jonathan. Jonathan is 18 years old, and he's a student at Cal State Dominguez Hills. He has been an explorer for the city for one year. Explorer Jonathan recently attended the, wow, it's a huge acronym, O C L E E A A, Explorer Academy with the 153 kids from other explorer posts from around Orange County and Southern California. Kids are tested in laws, policy, and procedure, and physical endurance. Explorer Jonathan completed the academy, and again, he ranked number one in his class. So before I present this certificate of recognition, Jonathan, would you like to say a couple of words? Don't be shy.
Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for being here. It's a great honor to be presented this award. But, I mean, it was great to be number one, but it isn't just a reflection of me, it's a reflection of the whole City of Santa Ana. I mean, this, the whole post works hard for everything that we do, and along with our advisors who really take time out of their busy schedule to help us out. The two advisors we have present right now are Officer Sanchez and Officer Juarez. They were actually, could you guys please come up?
And let's give them a round of applause.
That's it.
So shy. But maybe the advisors would like to say a couple of words on behalf of our explorers here and our program before I present the certificate of recognition. Of course, our officers are not shy. And hopefully, these young men and women will one day become future Santa Ana PD officers. And this is why it's with great privilege that we're recognizing Jonathan. Hopefully, one day, he will be wearing this uniform.
I just wanna say that I'm very proud of all the explorers that attended the academy. There was 150 explorers, and they showed a lot of effort, a lot of integrity, and I'm very proud of them.
So Jonathan, please join me and the advisors. And I would like to present the certificate of recognition awarded to Jonathan Alahedro. Alahado?
Alverdejo.
Alverdejo, from the Santa Ana Police Department Police Explorers. Congratulations on being selected number one explorer of your class.
And now I wanna call on Councilmember Vince Armento and Dr. Anna Jimenez. I saw you out there in the audience, please come on down. He has a presentation to make to you. So if he could come on down, Anna Jimenez, and I'll turn things over to Councilmember Vince Armento. And he's just waiting for the cadets, the explorers to go by, and I think he's done with that. So just come around on us so you can join him. Councilmember Vince Armento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as Dr. Jimenez comes forward, let's give those good-looking young guys another big round of applause. Thank you, guys, for everything that you do. I have this distinct honor and privilege of having a good friend, but also a community partner with us that does very, very good things here in the city. And it's my honor to recognize her tonight. She's been here with us before, and I believe she's served on some commissions with us as well. But she's somebody we count on to do excellent work in the community, and her name is Dr. Anna Jimenez-Hami. And she is the founder of the Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center. We call it OCTAG. And what they do there, their mission is to provide innovative artistic, educational, and therapeutic programs to transform and inspire children at risk and families, and help them all reach their highest potential. I know that she works with also special needs students, and she works with many of our children here in the city and in the county to help improve their lives. And she creates an environment at her center that's safe, that's educational, that's constructive, and something that all of us can be very, very proud of. And I'm here tonight because even though she has many of her own personal accomplishments, like receiving her, I believe her master's in psychol, actually, her undergraduate and her master's in psychology and music therapy from FSU. I'm not gonna say the year because every, they do that to me, and they can guess my age, so I'm not gonna do that. But she received her doctoral degree in educational psychology from USC as well. And even though I went to UCLA, I'm not gonna make a stink out of you going to USC. So, that being said, we're recognizing her tonight because she was recognized recently and received the Everyday Hero of the Year Award from the Orange County Register. And what that is, is that's given to people who devote their lives to helping others and helping improve the lives of other people in the county. And so it's a very distinct privilege and recognition that she's received. And I know she doesn't need those sort of awards or those recognitions to keep her doing, you know, the work she's already been tasked to do. But it's, I think, impressive that, you know, the register and the rest of us take a moment and pause and recognize the good work that's being done in our city. And she's somebody that does a lot of good things. And I'm gonna go ahead and give the floor to her in a few minutes so she can explain to us what she does in more detail. But I think it's good, as we recognize students, as we recognize other organizations and associations that help us make a better city, we stop to thank Dr. Jimenez. In addition to that, she also received a $10,000 grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. So these recognitions and awards and funds that she's received recently are just telling, and they inspire all of us to recognize the good work that she does and to support the efforts that she, that she makes every day to kids. And so we wanna thank her and recognize her with a, with two recognitions. One, for the Everyday Hero of the Year Award, congratulating her on her award there. But also, I think this award from the National Endowment for the Arts Grant is a very, very huge recognition because it carries with it not just an amount in funds, but it's a very competitive process, I know, and there's several organizations that do good work throughout the country. And to compete with them and to prevail and to be awarded that recognition is something very significant. I'm very proud of recognizing her here as somebody who we celebrate every day and thank her for the work that she does. And please join me in giving her a big round of applause, Dr. Anna Jimenez-Hami.
Just a few words, thank you, Councilwoman Armento, and thank you to all the council members, our new city manager and the mayor for focusing also this year on the arts because the arts is very important for our community. And I'm just here like another person, there's other groups too, that dedicate their lives. There's people that I saw here from Talher San Jose, you know, that also, they dedicate their life for our community. So I'm just humbled and thankful to have the opportunity to help our community, and thank you again for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anna Jimenez got this award, and she's a very special person. She's been doing this so well for a long, long time, and we much appreciate you. I, two things today, I'm just gonna ask ourselves, and I'm talking to council members, I'm gonna try to have the clerk try to limit our comments to three minutes. I know. Well, well, on things in general, Mayor Proctem, maybe you can make some comment. I know you requested, I consider this.
I don't know how the council feels about it, but we should
Your mic's not on.
Probably take a look at consent calendar items. The strategic plan is.
Look, we can amend it and we can invoke. Does that sound good? All right. All right. So with that, we're still going to have a long time before we get to consent calendar, because we've got a ton of folks here wanting to speak. And so before I do that, Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report out of closed session?
I do, Mayor and councilmembers. I have a couple of matters to report on. I'm going to have to verify one of the last numbers. But on our two workers' comp matters, Rondell versus City of Santa Ana and Murray versus City of Santa Ana, the first one, the council members authorized a settlement in the amount of $19,665 plus lifetime medical. I'm required under the Brown Act to report that this was unanimously approved with Armento, Benavides, and Polito absent. With respect to Murray versus City of Santa Ana, another workers' comp case, you approved a settlement in the amount of $43,489 with Armento and Benavides absent on that one. We also had the matter of Calhoun versus City of Santa Ana, and I'm going to have to give you the specific amount on that, but that was approved. And we also discussed in closed session a matter of items involving the Department of Finance, and direction was provided to legal counsel and staff.
Thank you. And with that, what I'm going to do is now call people to come down and addresses as part of our public comment. So with that, let's start with Steve Rocco. Come on down, Steve, followed by Peter Katz. If you guys could start the timer, please, Madam Clerk.
I had a different speech prepared for tonight, but as things go, I felt this one would be more timely. Right now, we have a woman police officer here sitting, which seems to be something which is new. But I'd like to give you some of the after-effects of my last talk after I accused Mayor Polito and our racacins of organized crime. So I go home, and I'm followed by the Santa Ana Police Department, which is not unusual. However, soon after that, we have a helicopter hovering over my house for 20 minutes. Doesn't bother with high beams, no loudspeaker, really cool. It would be odd if this wasn't the first time. So anyway, thinking this is really something special, we did have our complaint with the Fair Political Practices Commission. So just so you know, that's our complaint, Mayor. So I know the media doesn't want anybody to know who's behind it, but that's our formulation right there. We're not finished. Okay, so, within that time, Michael Fullup is also dead. Now, Michael Fullup, like you, Mayor, I had a restraining order hearing. Absolutely nobody gets to testify, and of course, the judge is not going to grant it. Now, Mr. Fullup, who's just happened, his wife and the judge's wife just happened to work at the same place where the Orange School District, where I was a trustee. He's never going to testify. You're never going to testify. And I am really concerned. And it's not just because the police officer is sitting there, because you're a domino. I know your name is Polito, but it's actually domino. You're never going to testify. So at least we're at step one. At least we're at the investigation stage. Hopefully, we'll get to phase two, which is indictment. Hopefully, we'll get to incarceration as well. But until that happens, I just want you to know that we haven't forgotten about you. We want you to run for mayor again. We like you having you right there. So if there's any trouble with you running again, I'll even sign your nomination papers. How's that? See you again.
Peter Katz, followed by Zeke Hernandez, and then followed by Georgia Estrada. Go ahead, Peter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and residents. I come here with some great news tonight, and I want to speak on behalf of the Resolution 55D for the establishment and support for a Southern California Veteran Cemetery in Orange County. Last Tuesday night, over 40 veterans traveled to the City of Irvine, testified before the Irvine City Council, and it was their key vote after a three-hour debate, which ruled the day. A substitute motion was offered for a further study of this bill, which would have effectively killed it. It failed on a two-to-three vote. On the original motion, the bill carried with a four-to-one vote. And talking to Mayor Choi afterwards, he said that my vivid testimony about my service on the Korean Peninsula was able to move him to sway his vote. Now, this is just the beginning, but this shows how active students that started, like these young children here, and citizens like myself, can actually get something done. This is just the beginning. But I want to thank people like Roman Reyna for agendizing this tonight. We want to get all 34 cities to endorse this resolution. I want to thanks Villa Park, City Councilperson Deborah Polly, for traveling all the way to Irvine to testify. She has a son serving in Afghanistan. And so freedom is never free, but I want to just bring up some key dates that are coming up here. April 29th, this will go before the Veterans Affairs Committee at the State Assembly. May 23rd, it will go before the Appropriations Committee for the Assembly. June 1st, it will be introduced in the Senate Veterans Affairs Committee. August 31st, it will go before the Senate Appropriations Committee, and hopefully, it'll go to the Governor's Desk by September 30th, and the announcement will be made on Veterans Day, November 11th, if all things go well. I have some bumper stickers. We urge citizens to write letters to the state legislature. Letters count. They like to see letters that people support this legislation. And I'm urging the council to endorse this resolution. We met this afternoon with Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez, who sits on the Homeland Security Committee and the Veterans Affairs Committee in Washington. And she is possibly going to open negotiations with the FBI over additional lands that the FBI owns along the Great Park that abuts to the Cleveland National Forest. So the FBI will be coming out here next week, and so we're really excited about this bill. And if you looked at last Friday's Orange County Register, the local section, you'll see the five of us that started this movement last August. So, and it has grown. We've got every veterans organization in the state behind us. And so we're looking for a lot of support from Santa Ana residents. So it shows you, things can get done when you start and you try. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And thank you for your work. I think you have a lot of support from this council on that as well. Zeke Hernandez, followed by Georgia Estrada.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Zeke Hernandez. I'm president of Santa Ana LULAC, League of United Latin American Citizens, and also vice chair for the Orange County Veterans Memorial Park Committee. A couple of things. One, I want to thank you for considering and hopefully voting yes on the resolution in terms of the CIR and deportation issues. Two, I want to also thank you for your hopeful approval of the strategic plan without any major changes. As to Peter's remarks, I'm speaking to you in favor of the resolution to support AB 1453, authored by Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk. It is my sincere hope that our friends realize, we believe we are speaking for all military veterans who have served in the past, and for those who are today serving our great country, these United States of America. I myself served in the U.S. Army Artillery Hawk Missile Air Defense 66 or 68 while in uniform. My two brothers also served in the Army fighting the war in Vietnam. Two members of our local LULAC chapter, Santa Ana Council 147, served in World War II. Ralph Bettis was laid to rest in 2013, and Jess Sine still lives today and continues to be active raising funds for students in scholarship. Many years ago, I was instrumental in having my good friend, Vietnam veteran Sergeant Roy Benavides, a Medal of Honor recipient, come to Santa Ana as a grand marshal for the city's Harvest Day Parade. Back in those days, I was there to celebrate the city's birthday. Men and women in uniform continue the legacy of serving our country, prepared to give the ultimate sacrifice for our ideals. Our country has always observed a special gratitude and should continue eternally. Today, a veteran can be buried to the north, to the west, to the south, but not here in Orange County. Another Medal of Honor recipient was just recently buried in Riverside. My brother could be married, buried in Riverside, but probably will not be. We know the City of Santa Ana recognizes the many contributions our many women have given to our country by serving in time of peace and war. Our Veterans Memorial Park Committee and many others are working for the selection of a small plot of land at the Marine Corps Air Station in El Toro, where thousands served. We are certain the City of Santa Ana and the City Council places the highest values to the land consecrated by these individuals who gave so much to others that others may live a great life in these United States. Thank you very much in terms of the approval for that resolution.
Thank you, Zeke. Georgia Estrada, followed by John Raya.
I would like to comment on item 55C. The City Council has passed at least three resolutions on immigration since 2009, and tonight, the City Council will pass another resolution urging Congress and the President to expand the Deferred Action for Deportation of Illegal Aliens Under 31 Years of Age and suspend deportations of illegal aliens who may have committed misdemeanors but no major crimes. The Deferred Action Program was not authorized by Congress. President Obama yielded to illegal alien groups, radical Hispanic politicians, labor unions, and the Mexican government bypassed Congress and directed Homeland Security to defer deportation of illegal aliens under the age of 31. When the City Council opposed Arizona Safe Neighborhoods Act, SB 1070, in 2010, the Council's principal argument was Arizona had no jurisdiction or power over federal immigration laws. The City Council now wants cities to dictate immigration laws and will urge the federal government to stop deportations of illegal immigrants. The City's Council's support for an end to deportation is political, hypocritical, and only undermines and dilutes our nation's immigration laws. The interests of illegal aliens are well-represented on the City Council and by Hispanic legislatures in Sacramento. The question is, who is representing the interest of American citizens? This is the question voters should ask candidates in the next election. As to the deportation numbers, the Obama administration has artificially inflated deportation numbers by counting border apprehensions or voluntary returns as deportations. Under the lawless Obama administration, there has been fewer deportations than under previous administration. And as to the argument illegal aliens are contributing to the economy, when they take jobs from U.S. citizens and legal residents and send billions out of the country to their home countries, how does this help the economy? The issue of illegal aliens must be decided, must be resolved by the American people, not by citizens of foreign countries. Citizens must urge Congress and the President to enforce our immigration laws, secure borders, oppose amnesty, and the Deferred Action Program. Thank you.
Thank you, George. John, followed by Matthew Southgate, followed by Alan Baylis, I believe it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, chief, and folks at home. My name is John Raya. I am the founder of TKO Boxing Club here in Santa Ana. And this year, we are celebrating 20 years of serving the community, serving the youth of this community and their families. We have done this for those 20 years with a completely all-volunteer staff, and we continue to do well. One of our young men has traveled to Russia. He's back from the Ukraine, and he's also gone to Italy. He told me at our Christmas party, I didn't realize I was going to get to travel so much when I first came to the boxing club. We promote health, fitness, education, and hard work. So I'd like to invite you all and the community to the amateur boxing show that we are having March 22nd at Jerome Center, 726 South Center Street. Beginning at 1 o'clock, we will have 20 amateur bouts, and young folks, young men, young women, travel from all over Southern California to take part in these shows. So I'm going to encourage you to please come down there and see us and let them know that we have your support. I know we see many of you there, and we appreciate it, and thank you again for your support.
And thank you, John, for your 20 years of service to this community.
You bet.
Thank you. Matthew Southgate, followed by R. Alan Baylis, followed by Zulemi Imma Valera.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Matt, and I am coming here as a rep for United Artists of Santa Ana. I also want to declare my appreciation for SACRED and their involvement and creation of a lot of this strategic planning. I was following what happened at the last council meeting. I read about several of the different comments from the council members about frustrations with different groups. One of my favorite council members, Mr. Armento, was, out of frustration, declaring that SACRED was a lobbyist group. And so I wanted to address some of that in my comments. I do not know whether it's fair to call SACRED a lobbyist group, but we all know that we have plenty of lobbyist groups here in Santa Ana, and I think that they should be observed or critiqued just as much as SACRED should. So, going back to strategic planning, when I attended the first strategic planning community meetings, I noticed that arts and culture was repeatedly a very popular category for community members to add requests, suggestions, their input, et cetera. However, it is not escaping our notice that arts and culture categories are gradually, systematically disappearing from the strategic planning language and being replaced with entertainment. I have asked other attendees and participants of the community forums if entertainment requests were being made at the strategic planning meetings. The answer is no. They said certainly not more than other arts and culture programs. So speaking about lobbyists, I ask, who is lobbying so hard to push entertainment over traditional arts and culture? What is the difference between the two? And its most socially beneficial ways, arts and culture is about the creation of positive values for communities. And what is entertainment? Entertainment is primarily escapism, mental passivity. It is a spectator sport. There is nothing terribly wrong with that, it's just that it was not the community focus of the strategic planning sessions. So I'm asking the City of Santa Ana, please do not give your participants a bait-and-switch style. Do not promote entertainment on the coattails of the actual arts and culture as requested by the various community members. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. R. Alan, please come on by. After that, Ms. Valera, and then Paola Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's R. Alan Baylis. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I've actually become well-known as the leading expert on defense of drivers charged with running a red light through the use of the red light camera system. So I'm here to urge the council tonight to follow the staff recommendation to not just simply terminate the Red Flex contract at the end of the, when it expires, but to terminate it as soon as humanly possible. These camera tickets are very expensive. They're the finest, $500. And as stated in the report, the city issues in the neighborhood between 25,000 and 30,000 tickets a year. It's a huge drain on the economy. And the problem really comes down to a couple of different things. First of all, the intersections are primarily set up in order to maximize red light runs. First of all, the intersections are primarily set up in order to maximize red light runs. If the city is really interested in safety and really interested in reducing the number of red light runs, all you have to do is lengthen the yellow light a little bit, and the red light violations drop. You can add right green arrows at intersections where, you know, it's safe to make a right turn while the other directions are going the opposite way. Reduces red light runs. There's a whole bunch of engineering things that can be considered. Secondly, I noted in reading the interim police chief's report, he indicates in there that the officers do not file the charges or, you know, push the accept button when they see that there's a gender mismatch or that the picture of the driver doesn't match the picture of the owner. That's absolutely false. The city, the police officers absolutely do knowingly allow the charges to be filed against innocent vehicle owners. It was just last Thursday, I was retained by a woman who's the owner of the vehicle, and the driver of the car is clearly male. And in the report, it indicates that about 30%, I think it said, of the citations that are prosecuted come through the nomination process. What that means is that 30% of the people who have charges filed against them are innocent. How can we possibly have police officers allowed...
Can you please include the light is red?
Yes, I understand. How can police officers be allowed to file charges against innocent people?
Thank you.
You guys need to understand that. Thank you.
Zulema Valera, followed by Paola Alvarez, followed by Adriana Moreno.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Zulema Valera, and I'm representing Sacred and Word4. As a member of Sacred, I have attended the city's community meetings and forums. With the help of Sacred, I have advocated for many policies, including restorative justice, and I'm very happy to see that it has been included in the plan. The reason I have pushed so hard for restorative justice over the past month is because I grew up in an area where youth knew the backseat of a police car by the time they reached high school. During my childhood, I would see my friends leave for a month, then three, then for a year, and now I don't even know if they will ever return. When I see restorative justice in the plan, I know that every single one of you, Mayor Pulido, Michelle, Tebe, Roman, Saul, Vincent, the city manager and your staff, all care for the youth of Santana, and you're working hard to prevent them from falling into the juvenile justice system. You're working to rehabilitate them and enable them to contribute to their communities and not to only confine them. So I want to thank you for doing that, and I look forward to seeing how restorative justice is implemented in the city in the years to come. Let's move this plan forward together, and thank you.
Thank you. And instead of clapping, if you're forward, please go like this, and if you have your flowers, please wave the flowers. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, Paola Alvarez, followed by Adriana Moreno, and after that, Cesar Covarrubias. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Paola Alvarez, and I'm a resident of Santa Ana. I have gone to the city's community meetings and forums to work on the five-year strategic plan with other youth and residents of Santa Ana and organizations that have helped our city. We have recommended many policies, and we are happy that you have included so many of them, especially a youth internship program. To me, internships are important because they have helped youth like me get different experiences that will help us in the future. Without jobs, the youth of Santa Ana may not be able to pay for college, and if we can't pay for it, we will not be ready to help our community. Internships are also important because as residents of Santa Ana, people can directly with the city, can work directly with the city. That is something not everyone gets to do. And thank you for involving the community in this plan and for bringing this plan to our city. This is a good plan. Thank you, city council members and the city manager for all your guys' hard work.
Thank you. Again, do this, do this. Thank you. Your Adriana?
Yes.
And then after Adriana, Cesar Covarrubias, and then Apolonio Cortez. And Apolonio is going to require a Spanish speaker, so if we can anticipate that, please. Please go ahead, Adriana.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Pulido, and city manager. My name is Adriana Moreno, and I'm the program director for the Children's Health Initiative of Orange County. We're a nonprofit organization here in Santana with the mission to connect all children and families to affordable and quality healthcare and social services. We are proud to have worked with the Santa Ana Collaborative for Responsible Development and Building Healthy Communities Initiative, along with the hundreds of residents that participated in creating this plan and creating a vision and priorities for this five-year strategic plan. Please bear with me as I name the broad group of organizations that work together in this process. The Cambodian Family, Bristol Street Business Association, Santa Ana Business Council, Occupy Santa Ana, Raíz, Boys and Men of Color, May Day Coalition, UFCW, Madison Park Neighborhood Association, Del Del High Center, Chicanos Unidos, Santa Ana Communities Artista Coalition, the Center OC, Orange County Coalition of Community Health Centers, The Grain Project, America on Track, UASA, OC Bar Foundation, OC Labor Federation, OCO, Latina Health Access, Accord, Kid Works, El Centro Cultural de México, Kennedy Commission, CLU, Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities, and of course, the hundreds of residents who continue to meet weekly for their voices to be heard. The collaboration of the city and all these different groups will definitely make the plan even more successful. I want to thank the city for putting together a great plan for the city's future, and particularly the great strategies and funding being aside, put aside to address the health of Santa Ana families. For example, goal number five, Strategy 6C, which states, "To integrate a variety of health and wellness programs into existing programs at each of the city's community recreation centers as comprehensive health access points." This is very important and is critical in this historic time of healthcare reform to ensure that all Santa Ana residents have the opportunity to enroll into available health programs. The Children's Health Initiative is committing today to work with you, the city, and its staff to help implement and support these strategies. Thank you for including these strategies and setting aside funding for equitable economic growth, healthy neighborhoods, and programs for Santa Ana youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Cesar, followed by Apolonio Cortez, and then Manuela Lopez.
Cesar's not here.
Apolonio. I had a meeting recently with Apolonio, and we talked a lot about his name. It's kind of like Apollo, but with Neoty in, Apolonio.
Buenas tardes, señores concejales, el personal. Mi nombre es Apolonio Cortez. Soy residente de esta ciudad. Como miembro de Sacred, he participado en reuniones de la comunidad y foros para compartir mis pensamientos sobre el plan estratégico de los cinco años. Junto con otros residentes de la ciudad y organizaciones que sirven a nuestra gente, hemos abogado por muchas pólizas y estamos muy contentos de que la mayoría de ellas hayan sido incluidas. Para mí, una de las cosas más importantes en este plan es el lenguaje que refleja equidad. Estamos firmemente convencidos de que el crecimiento económico debe levantarnos a todos en la ciudad, a los residentes, a los propietarios de negocios, a los estudiantes, a personas que buscan empleo, etc. La creación del lenguaje como este demuestra un gran liderazgo de su parte y le hace saber a los residentes como a nosotros en toda la ciudad que ustedes le tienen amor a la comunidad y buscan maneras de crear apoyo a todas las áreas de Santana. Como punto adicional, quiero sugerir que se apoye más a las medidas de transportación en el plan estratégico, a lo mejor teniendo a un coordinador de transporte. Los accidentes en la ciudad por causa de transporte son muchos, y es importante que el plan estratégico refleje maneras de solucionar esto. Yo uso mi bicicleta como medio de transporte todos los días, y me sentiría más seguro si hubiera alguien que supervise estas medidas en los siguientes cinco años. Gracias por el aprecio que ustedes le han puesto a la participación de la comunidad en este plan. Gracias por traer a nuestra ciudad este proyecto. Apoyamos el plan estratégico y agradecemos a todos ustedes, los miembros del Consilio y la oficina de nuestro administrador de esta ciudad por su trabajo. Gracias por el compromiso en mejorar el futuro de nuestra comunidad. Gracias. Buenas tardes.
Thank you. Now the translation, and after that, Manuela Lopez.
Good evening, members of the staff. My name is Apolonio Cortez. I'm a resident of the city and a member of Sacred. I've attended many of the community meetings and forums to share my thoughts regarding the five-year strategic plan. Together with other residents of the city, other organizations that serve our people, we have advocated for many policies, and we are very happy that most of these have been included. And to me, one of the most important things in the plan is the language reflecting equity. We are firmly convinced that the economic growth should lift us all in the city, the residents, business owners, students, people who are looking for jobs, et cetera. The creation of language such as this shows a great leadership on your part and lets the residents, us residents, know that the entire, and the entire city, that you love the community and are looking for ways to create support for all areas of Santa Ana. As an additional point, I'd like to suggest to support more the means of transportation in, the most of transportation in the strategic plan, perhaps having a transportation coordinator. Accidents in the city because of transportation are many, and it is important that the strategic plan reflects ways to solve this. I myself use a bicycle as a means of transportation every day, and I would feel safer if there was someone looking at these measures in the next five years. Thank you for your support and the support you have given to the community participation in this plan. Thank you for involving our city in this project. We support the strategic plan and thank all of you, the members of the council and the city manager's staff, for all your work. Thank you for the commitment to improve the future for the community of Santa Ana.
Okay, now, Manuela, followed by, I believe it's Manuela, followed by Sari Arpera, and after that, Alexis Teodono.
Buenas noches a todos.
Bajen un poquito eso.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Manuela Lopez. Soy residente de Santana. Como miembro de Sacred, he asistido a reuniones de la comunidad de Santana y foros para compartir mis pensamientos sobre el plan estratégico para los siguientes cinco años. Junto con otros residentes y organizaciones de la ciudad que sirven a nuestra gente, hemos abogado por muchas pólizas y estamos contentos de que la mayoría de ellas hayan sido incluidas. Pero a pesar de todos esos grandes logros que ustedes han realizado, nos gustaría que se incluyera una meta más. Ahorita, en el plan estratégico habla de modificar el modelo de negocios de la cárcel para asegurar que las necesidades de la comunidad sean satisfechas por medio de negociaciones, de contratos y eficiencia. Pero nosotros creemos en la importancia del lenguaje que refleje algo más específico y sugerimos que se escriba entre sus objetivos a largo plazo la eventual terminación de los contratos con agencias federales como ICE. Y a la misma vez, se mantenga la capacidad de la ciudad de sostener a la cárcel como un bien público que es económicamente sostenible y que tome en cuenta la seguridad de empleo de las personas que trabajan directa o indirectamente en las operaciones de la cárcel. En Sacred, no dudamos que ya esté trabajando en una investigación, pero quisiéramos lenguaje específico del proceso. Es por eso que hoy les pedimos que ustedes consideren poner un lenguaje que refleje el trabajo tan importante que ustedes ya han realizado. Como concejales de una gran ciudad de inmigrantes, es importante para todos tener una visión a largo plazo, en dirección hacia una cárcel pública económicamente sostenible, que continúe siendo recurso de empleo para nuestros residentes. Gracias por el valor que ustedes le han puesto a la participación comunitaria en este plan. Gracias por su liderazgo y por traer a nuestra ciudad este proyecto. Apoyamos el plan estratégico y agradecemos a todos ustedes, los miembros del Consilio y a nuestro administrador de la ciudad, por todo su trabajo y compromiso con el futuro de Santana. Finalmente, queremos reconocer y agradecer una resolución que apoya la reforma migratoria y que expande a la acción diferida a todas las personas sin récord criminal. Es un gran paso, y todos queremos seguir trabajando para hacer más. Gracias y felicidades por todo su trabajo y éxito.
My name is Manuela Lopez, and I'm a resident of Santa Ana. As a member of Sacred, I've gone to many of the community meetings in Santa Ana and the forums to share my thoughts regarding the five-year strategic plan. Together with other residents in the city and other organizations that serve our people, we have advocated for many policies and are happy that most of them have been included. In spite of this, great accomplishments that you have done, we'd like to include one more goal. Right now, the strategic plan talks about modifying the model of, the business model in the jail to ensure that the community needs are met through negotiation of contracts and efficiencies. But we believe in the importance of language needs to reflect something more specific and suggest that you write into it the objectives, the long-term objectives, to the eventual termination of the contracts with federal agencies such as ICE. And at the same time, you build the capacity of the city to have the city as a jail, as a public good, that is economically sustainable and that ensures the employment security of the people that work directly or indirectly in the jail operations. In Sacred, we have no doubt that you are working, you're researching this, but we would like a more specific language about the process. And that's why today we ask you to consider language that reflects this important work that you have already accomplished. As council people in the city of immigrants, it's important for us to have a long-term vision in the direction to a jail that is a public jail, that is economically sustainable and continues being a resource, a source of employment for our residents. Thank you for the value that you have in community participation in this plan. Thank you for your leadership and for bringing this project to our city. We support the strategic plan and thank all of you, members of the council and our new city manager, for your work and the commitment for the future of Santana. Finally, we'd like to recognize and to have, and thank you for the resolution to support the immigration reform and to expand deferred action to all people without a criminal record. This is a great step, and we all like to work toward more. Thank you, and congratulations for your success.
Thank you. Sari, followed by, or was that Sari? Sari, followed by Alexis Teodono, followed by Abraham Medina, or Abraham Medina.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sara Arpero. Pues gracias a los miembros del Consilio, al alcalde, al manejador de la ciudad. Me gustaría comenzar reconociendo el trabajo y la disponibilidad que han mostrado a la comunidad de Santa Ana en los últimos ocho meses para aumentar la participación de la comunidad, sacar adelante el plan, el trabajo, al describir un plan estratégico con las recomendaciones que vienen por parte de la comunidad de Santana. Es un orgullo poder compartir a otras comunidades que en Santana existe un espíritu de participación e inclusión comunitaria que nace desde nuestros representantes del Consilio. Y lo hemos logrado de las siguientes maneras. Las relaciones que hemos logrado tener con nuestros concejales, que aunque no siempre estamos de acuerdo en todo, existe la madurez y disponibilidad para sentarnos a hablar y balancear las cosas. Eso crea un lugar donde la comunidad se siente en un espacio protegido y que no importa la educación, estatus migratorio, o nivel social, que sí seremos escuchados, y como consecuencia, siguen las ganas de participar en beneficio de nuestras comunidades. Como coalición de Sacred y comunidades saludables, tenemos capacidades de trabajar en que se escuchen las voces colectivas de las personas, que al igual que ustedes, se preocupan por crear posibilidades para las comunidades con menos recursos. Por tal motivo, el trabajo es con organizaciones, negociantes, residentes, trabajadores, padres de familia, jóvenes, adultos mayores, madres y padres solteros, desamparados, comunidad con necesidades especiales, y cualquier persona que quiera aportar porque Santana viva, digna, y tranquila. Por lo tanto, y porque somos una alianza trabajando lado a lado con nuestros concejales, la alcaldía, y el manejador de la ciudad, creemos tener las cualidades para ser un modelo, para mostrar a otras ciudades que la participación hace la diferencia. Y que a diferencia de los muchos comentarios desagradables que se dicen de Santana, somos una ciudad que practica una democracia, que es trabajadora y capaz de enfrentar cualquier reto. No podemos dejar de celebrar desde el distrito de la estación del tren, siguiendo por la ordenanza Sunshine, y a consecuencia, el plan estratégico. estación del tren, siguiendo por la ordenanza Sunshine y a consecuencia, el plan estratégico. Hemos logrado crear una voz colectiva validando las recomendaciones de todas las personas que creen en la misión que declara el borrador del plan estratégico. Una ciudad donde tenemos servicios públicos eficientes, seguridad pública, un ambiente económico próspero, oportunidades para la juventud y una alta calidad de vida para los residentes. Y queremos seguir celebrando juntos hoy con el borrador, el primero de abrir con la aprobación de este borrador y no olvidar que queremos seguir trabajando juntos en beneficio de nuestras comunidades. Por parte de comunidades saludables y Sacred, este es el último comentario que queremos compartir con ustedes. Gracias.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council in Santa Ana, city manager. We'd like to start by recognizing the work and the availability that you have demonstrated toward the community of Santa Ana in the last eight months to increase community participation in bringing forth this draft of the strategic plan with the recommendations from the people who live, at work and visit Santa Ana. It is, we're proud to share with other communities that Santa Ana, in Santa Ana, there is a spirit of participation and community inclusion that is born of the representatives of the council. And we have done it by the following things. The relationships that we have attained with our council people, although we don't always agree, there is maturity and availability to sit together and talk to balance things. And this creates a place where the community feels that there's a space that is protected. Doesn't matter what immigration status you may have, social level, we will be heard and as a result, we have the desire to continue participating for the benefit of our communities. As a coalition, Sacred and SABHC, we have, we have built capacity to work so that we can have a collective voice from the people and just as you care for, to create possibilities for the communities of lesser resources. And that's why the work with organizations, business people, residents, workers, parents, youth, seniors, single parents, homeless and the community, for the special people with special needs, anybody that wants to contribute because Santa Ana has a life that is dignified, peaceful and safe. Therefore, because we are working together side by side with our council people, with the mayor's office, the city council and the city manager, that we believe that we have the qualities to be a model, to show other cities that participation and involvement makes a difference. And many of the comments that are not pleasant about Santa Ana, in spite of those comments, we are a city that practices democracy with people who are working and can face any challenge. We cannot stop celebrating the station district here, the Sunshine ordinance, and because of that, we have now this strategic plan draft created by a collective voice validating the recommendations from people whose mission is to create, is declared in the strategic plan draft. As a city where we have public services that are efficient, public safety and a prosperous economic environment, opportunities for youth and high quality of life for the residents. We'd like to continue celebrating today this draft, working together for the benefit of the community and now, and on April 1st with the approval of this draft, and we'd like to continue working together and not forget that we are working together for the benefit of our communities.
Thank you. Now, I believe Alexis and then Abraham and then Giovanna Miranda.
Hi, my name is Alexis Navat Teodoro and I'm part of an undocumented family. I'm also the lead for the deportation defense team of the immigrant rights group called RAIZ. We are the only migrant-led group in Orange County that stops deportations. We successfully stopped the deportation of Indian political refugee Gurmuks Inc., who is a Garden Grove resident, and we're on our way with the community's support to also stop the deportation of Anaheim undocumented mother Marcela Rodriguez. I mention Marcela Rodriguez because that, even though she's a victim of domestic violence, she was taken in instead of her abusive husband. And when Anaheim Police Department found she was undocumented, she was placed on an ice hold and transferred to the Orange County Sheriff's Department and then placed in ICE custody. I mention that because that's exactly what happens in the Santana City Jail. People get placed there and they're in ICE custody, facing deportation. We stopped deportations because we believe nobody, we're personally impacted by the issue and we believe that nobody should be deported. About, about a year ago, about a year ago, we brought up the issue of the ICE contract and the issue of ICE detainees. We so-called named a campaign, a campaign called Keeping Our Families Together, and we met with Council Benavides, Council Roman Reina, Council Michelle Martinez. We even met with your city attorney and we gave them our proposal, an ordinance that would state that the Santana will gradually delete the ICE contract and will stop honoring ICE detainees. Through our meetings with these council members, we educated them that ICE detainees are not mandatory, they are just voluntary. There's no law in the U.S. that states you have to honor them. Several federal court decisions, decisions, such as the Arizona v. United States, which is when the federal government sued Arizona for the SB 1070 law, even states that detainees are unconstitutional because they violate due process of law. We know Santana deportes people. A simple symbolic letter to Obama to stop deportations would do nothing to bring justice to our community. After all these several meetings, we're sort of just fed up at the fact that you haven't taken seriously our proposal that we gave you guys last year, and now we're really looking into escalating because if you guys cannot fully understand the impact of what you guys are doing and been doing it for years and on top of that, making millions of dollars, then I'm sorry, but you lack leadership for the undocumented immigrant community in Santana and in Orange County. At a public safety meeting last year, I invited the council members in a public safety committee to come to my house to see how an undocumented family survives, how we think, how we feel about the ICE contract.
Please, you have to wrap up.
And I would still like to send that invitation for you council members to come to my house to meet my undocumented family, to tell you exactly how we feel about the ICE contract. And we don't want it, and we further separate families in a steep sphere, and we don't want you to honor any ICE detainees anymore.
Thank you. If you can please conclude. Abraham followed by Giovanna Miranda. And if you're happy with a speaker, please raise your hands and go like this. It's not a pep rally here. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm part of the Boyce Menacolor. My name is Abraham Medina. I know that to, well, I'm here to talk about restorative justice in the strategic plan. And to us, we feel that it is a step forward, having that language. But more importantly is how the community is going to be involved in the implementation of the proposals presented in the strategic plan. And so, we, our group is eager to, we've been doing a lot of research, a lot of investigation. Yesterday, we met with the National Council on Crime and Delinquency and they have sites in San Diego, San Francisco, Oakland and Richmond. And they have diversion models based on restorative justice in those cities and counties. And we believe that in, in moving forward, the community should be really involved and be part of this process of implementation. And so, we're, we're, as a Boyce Menacolor, again, we, we have been doing this work in the community. We had a forum on Saturday to get, to get the community involved in knowing what this looks like, what it could look like in the city. And so, just briefly, we are open to having those discussions about how we can bring those opportunities to Santana. Thank you.
Thank you. Giovanna Miranda followed by Marilyn Montano.
My name is Giovanna Miranda and I'm actually here to talk about, just as everyone was talking about the strategic plan, and I'm very happy that you included a lot of the measures that the community really wants, but I'm here to address the exclusion of this contract. Quite honestly, I know that we've been working with you for over a year. I've been having talks with my friends about what's been going on, and all this does is make me question, what is your persistence with this damn contract? You know, why is it that you can't get rid of it? What is your need that you have on this profit from this contract? And honestly, like, somebody was mentioning that Obama hasn't even deported as many as presidents in the, in the past. That's not true. It's been more than two million now. How do you contribute to this because of this contract? And I'm angry. I don't know if Obama's coming back tomorrow. I don't know if that's going to happen ever. I've seen her compadre, I've seen my neighbors not come back. And I don't think you're aware how this feels. And honestly, it doesn't even surprise me that you don't listen to us because I see some of you even texting, you're not looking at me, you're not listening to the speakers. You enter people, I clap because that's my support. That's how I express myself. So I, I ask you to please consider terminating this contract. It does, you know, you're supposed to be this Latino council and when I talk to people, they, they trust you, but I question you. I question you because I want to hold you accountable for what you say you're going to do.
Marilyn Montano followed by Carlos Peña.
Hello, my name is Marilyn Montano and I'm here with Keeping Our Families Together and RAIZ. And I'm here today because as someone who comes from a migrant family, I noticed that there is no language in terminating the ICE jail contract in a strategic plan of the city. And I don't know if, I mean, I think it's, I mean, just we have to stop and realize that we need to take in consideration all these migrant families that are being affected by this contract. And it's not just mine, it's many of my friends, many of my, my neighborhood, they're being affected by this. You know, every day, not knowing if my dad's going to come home or not, and knowing if my mom's going to be able to come home also too. So I think you need to, you need to consider that as well and, and work is, work is not done. It's cool that we're celebrating about restorative justice, that's all cool, but I also feel that we need to take in consideration this, this problem, that the ICE jail contract needs to be terminated as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Carlos followed by Diana Lopez. Is Carlos here? Thank you, Carlos. Question for Diana Lopez and María Rosa Lopez and Sergio Trujillo. You all wish to speak on 55C. Do you want me to call you now or wait till we hit 55C? Because you indicated that on your form here.
That's fine now.
Now, okay. I'll call you now. Please, go ahead.
Hello, members of the council, Mayor Pulido. Again, we're here to address the issue of the ICE contract. And as we understand, the strategic plan is represent the values of the city of Santana. It's what we're going to be working on the next five years to make this city better. With that said, we noticed that the ICE contract is still no part, the termination of the ICE contract is still no part of this plan. And if the plan represents the values of our community, the values of our community is ending this contract that is not deporting, that is supporting families, not just necessarily from Santana, but from other cities that are nearby in Southern California. We understand that President Obama has supported two million people, more than any other president. But we have to also question, where does the deportation process start? The deportation process start at the local level with the ICE detainee policies that are currently in place that don't have to be honored. Kamala Harris herself stated that these ICE detainees are voluntarily. So as part of the proposal that we have brought to you a couple of months ago, including the termination of the ICE contract, we have educated several members of the council about what is an ICE detainer, what can be done to not honor it and how it has impacted our families. So we really encourage you to consider adding the strategic, the ICE contract termination to strategic plan, but also we encourage you to revise some of the proposals we have presented to you before because it's something that is of a personal matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Lopez, please.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. I thank you for putting Resolution 55 on the agenda. I asked that there is a unanimous vote for yes. And this is not only just a letter, this is the beginning of a campaign that's happening from city to city since Congress wasn't compelled to pass immigration reform. This isn't just a letter to Obama, this is a resolution saying that at the local level we're also pushing for immigration reform. Last time we were here, council members, Sarmiento, said that we needed to address Congress, not just the city council. And we have addressed Congress, the Senate and also the city council because they're three essential elements of our government. Unfortunately, Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez has not signed on to the Grijalva and Clark resolution. And as a, as a resident of Santa Ana and somebody that worked hard to get Dornan out and to get Loretta Sanchez in, we're astonished that she hasn't signed on to the resolution of Grijalva and Clark to support immigration reform. And we're going to work tirelessly to put pressure on her. And if she can't support us or represent our city, then just as we work tirelessly to get her in position, we will also continue to work tirelessly to get her out and to get somebody there that's truly going to represent us. We're also asking that, that it's added that ICE, that the police not continue to cooperate with ICE and to end the contract. Because as, as we spoke last time, there's no need for ICE to be in our local jails. If somebody commits a crime that's significant or a felony, ultimately, if they're undocumented, they're going to be passed to the federal government anyways. So there's no need for our city to be receiving funds from the federal government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I think Maria. I call the next, please come forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, mayor Protem, city council members. First, I just want to thank you, Mr. Benavides, Michelle Martinez and Mayor Protem Saltehno to, to put the Resolution 55C on the agenda. And we just wanted to see, to make pressure as many as we, we can to, to try to get a immigration reform, but, but the most important is to stop deportation. If we can stop deportation city by city, state by state, maybe we can get immigration reform. And it would be really nice if it is a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergio Trujillo followed by Guadalupe Mata, I believe it is.
Yes, hi, good evening. I would like to hold my comment until they call 55C, please, if that's okay.
So you want to hold it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mata, please.
¿Va a hablar en español?
Okay, if that's the case, let me have Alfredo Mesqua go and we'll get the translator here and you'll speak right after him.
¿Va a hablar otra persona antes que usted? Ahorita va a hablar Alfredo. Alfredo, adelante, por favor.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, I just want to give you a couple of thoughts for tonight. I am really, really pleased that all of you are supporting 55C. I think that's, we're sending a message loud and clear about how you are responsibly representing our city, all our residents, so I encourage that. The second thing I want to tell you very quickly is that unfortunately, we're only going to have less than three minutes, but I'm very happy and I'm very pleased on a personal basis as a resident of this city and member of this community and a businessperson of this community to see that we finally are getting to a place where we really need to go. I think this new generation of leadership that you're providing to our city, it is wonderful and we welcome that. We also welcome the fact that a new city manager is providing you with the guidance and the support. But I do want to go over a couple of quick, quick things and some recommendations that I'd like for you to please consider. One of the things that is very, very important whenever you have a strategic plan is to make sure that they are measurable data, measurable data, data. In other words, if we say we're going to accomplish this, well, we need to know what is it you're going to accomplish and also a timeframe to go with that. Because otherwise, this kind of a beautiful, nice plan is going to be sitting in somebody's, you know, office and we're going to say, yeah, we have a plan, but we need to make sure that you, our representatives, are going to be monitoring the working teams, that you're going to be monitoring the, the, your staff, and you're also going to be able to make sure that you represent to our community the following. You make me accountable. We indicated to you that we're going to accomplish this and such and such a date, and we have. And we indicated to you that we're going to increase employment by 10% or 7% and we are able to accomplish it. So please, keep that in mind. You may or may not be ready to approve the plan today because of some of the comments that I think I'm hearing so far, but one of the things... But one of the things that I wanna share with all of you is this, is that we definitely need to have qualified measurable data. And I think the city manager is familiar with that, with those concepts. But we also wanna make sure that, you know, one of the things that you were able to do this year, and you've seen what it is today, is the wonderful representation and the coming out of our members of our community in support of this effort. But I wanna make sure that you understand that many of the projects that you have here are addressing the needs of our young community. Please continue that. Make sure that the youth of our community continues to work with the city police department, with the probation department, and make sure that we have those options available. And finally, I wanna say to all of you, regardless of what protocol you have, I think you need to have more than three minutes to discuss, to provide your input to us as to how you feel about the plan, all right? So I would suggest that with all the respect that we need to provide ample time.
And we will, Al. I'm just suggesting consent calendar. Now let's get Mr. Mata, Guadalupe Mata.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches, a todos. Vengo aquí primero que nada a agradecer que finalmente la propuesta Consellera Benavides se esté agendando el día de hoy, que trata sobre el punto 55C. La campaña que se ha iniciado Proteja Nuestras Familias, algunos otros concilios de aquí de California, la han aprobado. Y la han aprobado sencillamente porque están pidiendo que a través de esta resolución... Se pide al presidente Obama parar deportaciones y extienda un programa de acción diferida para todos aquellos quienes califiquen, ya que la reforma se ve muy difícil que pueda venir. Y francamente Obama tiene las en la manga. Si él no quiere, es su decisión. Pero creo que él debe de considerar que lo que está haciendo, deportaciones de tantas personas, está haciendo, lo que está haciendo es separar familias. Yo vengo aquí precisamente a pedirles que esta resolución tenga un voto sí para que ustedes envíen esa resolución a Washington y sumen a tantos otros concilios que la han aprobado y han hecho la misma petición. Nuevamente agradezco que la hayan agendado porque desde hace tiempo se había hecho una petición. El hecho de que ustedes la hayan agendado quiere decir que sí hay voluntad para tratar de discutirla, votarla, pero creo que hay interés. Ustedes también tienen el poder y ustedes deben de decidir lo que la comunidad nosotros estamos pidiendo. Muchas gracias. Gracias Consellera Benavides por su trabajo, gracias a todos ustedes por considerarlo. Muchas gracias.
My name is Guadalupe Mata. Thank you. Good evening to all. Here, first of all, because you finally have put, here to support the proposal that you have put on the agenda, that's referenced in 55C. And the campaign to protect our families has been joined and supported by other California city councils, they have approved it. And because this asks President Obama to stop the deportations and include a deferred action program for those who qualify. And we believe that to get the immigration reform will be hard to do because Obama has an ace in his sleeve, and if he doesn't want to do it, it won't happen. This thing separates families, so we ask for a yes vote on 55C to send this resolution to Obama, to Washington DC, so they can join so many other California city councils. Thank you, first of all, for putting it on the agenda, because the fact that you put it on the agenda means that you're willing to discuss it, to vote on it, and you have an interest in it. You have the power to decide in favor of the people of the city. Thank you to Councilman Benavides, and thank you all for your work on this.
Bob Warner, do you wanna speak now? Because you, well, do you wanna speak now or you wanna wait for 29B, take it out? Go ahead, if you wanna speak now, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bob Warner. I'm an account director with Red Flex Traffic Systems. We've partnered with the City of Santa Ana since 2003, providing your red light program. We've been very proud of the results of that program. It has very effectively reduced traffic collisions, injuries and deaths in the community, and it's done so in a completely self-sustaining manner, which is exactly what we hope to achieve. We were somewhat surprised and disappointed that this matter is on a consent agenda this evening to consider a motion to allow the contract to expire. As you know, the contract does have a term that expires in June of next year, so there is no urgency to take this action tonight. If there are issues that exist with the program, we would ask for the opportunity to meet with staff and determine what those issues might be and see if there is a way that we can resolve the issues. We feel that the program has been very successful for the city. It's been a program that we have pointed to on many occasions with pride in terms of the public safety achievements that have been realized here. The Insurance Institute for Highway Safety conducted an independent analysis a few years back and pointed to a 44% reduction in Santa Ana in traffic collisions. And I think your own staff report indicates a 70% reduction in injury collisions. Those are your citizens not being injured. And we think that it's very important that we have an opportunity to discuss this with staff and hopefully reach an accord and if there are issues, resolve those. And so we would respectfully request that this matter be removed from consent agenda and continued to a future date for city council consideration, thereby giving us an opportunity to evaluate the program with your staff and see if there's things that we can do to make it better. We just learned about this yesterday afternoon and we have not been able to have an opportunity to meet with your city staff to determine what the reasons are for their recommendations. So at this time, we would just request respectfully that the issue be removed from consent and continued to a future city council date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I may, I have one speaker left on this, but then we have several other speakers on 25J. And I want to know, do you guys wanna speak now or do you wanna wait? Because we're gonna pull that item and we'll speak then. So you'd rather wait 25J? So I have one more request. I'd like to have the clerk, just for the record. I know we all received a letter from Tim Rush. If she has it, could you just please read it so it's read into the record? And then Thomas Gordon, if you could come to the mic, you'll be the next speaker after If you can just read it real quickly, it'll take a minute. And Thomas, go ahead, come to the mic, please.
Letter for the record received from Timothy Rush, past president of Washington Square and Wilshire Square Neighborhoods.
I've had a request by several members that want it read into the record.
What members? Who?
Members of the community. If you want, I'll read it into the record or I can have Thomas Gordon read it.
You can pass it out and place it as a part of the record. I just don't, I don't know, Madam City Attorney, we've never had, we've never done that.
I think you probably, in your resolution for decorum, I don't see anything that addresses the issue in that resolution. We receive lots of correspondence. Really is up to the council as to whether you want to have a process where people get letters. We normally will copy them.
Normally, we don't read them into the record, we just have them included in the record.
Right, and that's what we should do.
And in this case, I've had neighborhood association folks, Tim Rush in particular, who's on business in Tennessee, requested it be read into the record. And...
You know what, I don't think the council is okay with that.
Well, Councilor Benavides, do you have an opinion?
Ms. Mayor, you're chairing the meeting and I think if you choose to take a moment to read a...
A document, look, it's not my letter.
Well, no, 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 but you know, it's...
I mean, what's the pain?
The pain is this.
It'll be my three minutes. And we said this...
Can I please have point of order?
Please, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
Here's the issue, here's the issue. At what point do we stop? Okay, because there's gonna be a day where you may not like what's being read, and I want it read for the record, and I just think it sets a bad precedent. We don't wanna run meetings like this here. People have the ability to reach us by email, by mail. We can get copies of that letter, we can all read it right now and still make a decision. We don't need to read it for the entire public to read, to hear. If that person was that adamant that this message be spoken today, they could have had someone from the public fill out a...
Well, and what I'm suggesting, I don't know if Mr. Thomas is here for that.
Why are we carrying that person's water? You don't carry that person's water, let him...
Councilmember Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do wanna address Councilmember Benavides' comment. Look, there are some things that the chair has the liberty to do, and as the mayor, certainly he's running the meeting, but what this does is it sends us down a slippery slope. There are many written documents and written correspondence that we receive in advance of matters, and I think if we read this one into the record, I think those letters are just as compelling from those who submit. And if you're prepared to have that done, then I'm fine, but let's be consistent with all the written correspondence that we have, because I'm sure that there are people who want their written correspondence to be read into the record. That's all I'm saying, is that let's be fair with everybody who submits.
Look, I'm happy to be fair...
We can't leave it to the pleasure of the chair only, it has to be a consensus.
I understand that it has to be level. What I would request is, look, let's just put it in the record, and we all have it. It's a letter by Tim Rush. Let me just paraphrase if I may, and I'll let it go at that. He's just saying that there's many folks that have not been able to be involved in the process. And if he wants the letter, I'll have the clerk included in the record and then it can be available for people to have access to. And if Mr. Gordon wants to address it or say any words to that, you know, he's free to do so. So let's do that. Thomas Gordon, please.
Good evening. I'm down here also to speak on 65A, the strategic plan. I believe that what you've done is outstanding, it's true leadership. You guys have really taken the initiative for the last eight months to bring this process forward. But I think where the ball was dropped was basically yesterday. For eight months, this community went to meetings, was online, was sending letters and postcards and notes, was truly involved with everything that was going on. And if we talk about slippery slopes, I think that at the 11th hour, to have a backdoor meeting where there's input and the strategic plan is basically revised at the 11th hour, I think it's wrong. I think for eight months, the community spoke and said, this is what we wanted. And I think that's where the process should have been, or it should have been brought here and you guys should have debated it openly in front of the public. But at the last minute, to have the draft strategic plan be changed, I think sets a really bad precedent, and it's definitely a slippery slope that, for whatever reason or whoever initiated the process and the changes, I think that's where we've gone wrong, is for eight months, it was perfect, it was running right. We were out in the community, we were taking input, and then yesterday, the whole thing flipped within the last 24 hours. You can go right on the city's website, you can click on it and read it, and it's right on there. The alteration was done yesterday, and it's absolutely wrong. There was a story on The Voice of OC about it, how people met with the city manager and certain concessions were granted. I don't think that's a good policy, when we go out to the public and we ask for the public's input, and that input is put into a draft document, and then at the last minute, there's a revision made to either appease or, for whatever reason, I just think it sets a bad precedent. I hope that you guys seriously look at this and say, you know, take the time to do it right, what you've done. You've done a fantastic job, but to do something at the last minute, I think is seriously lacking. It shows bad judgment, it really shows a lack of ethics and really understanding what the community's asking for. I think you've done a good job listening so far, continue to listen to the community and bring forth the one that the community drafted up to allow, or continue the process on if you need to. But I just think the last-minute revisions that most of the community hasn't had a chance to see sets a bad precedent. Thank you all.
All right, for now, that is the last public speaker that we have. I'm now going to bring our attention to the consent calendar. I'd like 25J to be polled. And are there other items by councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, if you could, I'm gonna be abstaining on item 25H, as in house. Our family has a business across the street from the site, so I'm gonna go ahead and abstain out of an abundance of caution.
And question for me on the same item. This is probably within 300 feet of Ace Auto Care there on First Street, so I'm gonna do the same thing.
And finally, I wanna pull item 29B, as in boy.
29B, as in boy. Other items, Councilor Martinez?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull 25H, 29A, 55, yeah, those are the only ones.
All right.
I had 29A also. I actually wanted to see if we could continue this item until our next meeting so that we can look, evaluate it a little more thoroughly. I don't know if you're on board with continuing it.
I'll second that motion, but I, yep.
Okay.
Do we wanna take it up now, out of order, or you can take it up right now?
The motion was continuing.
Oh, motion, I made a motion to continue.
So we'll take it up now, we'll vote on it now then. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. All right, yes. 25B?
If there are no other items, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the balance.
Move the balance? Is there, okay, those in favor, on the balance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, I think it would be 25B. Please go ahead, Councilor Reyna.
Just as we go forward, I just had a question for staff. As far as, as we move into negotiations and contracts in the coming future, how would this impact the rest of the negotiations?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This agreement will not impact the future negotiations. One of the things that I have spoken with the labor units is that we would do negotiations under the same cycle, so that new agreements going forward would be for one year, and then we would do all the agreements the following year as a whole.
Simultaneously?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now are we on 25H? Would it be, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor, if I could have the city manager quickly, briefly just provide what 25H is, and that's the pilot project for the valet program.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We do have an item for your review and approval. There is a PowerPoint slide there. This would be the first valet in downtown Santa Ana. It's an amenity that would be available Thursday through Saturday, 8:00 PM to 2:00 AM. I do wanna emphasize that during this timeframe, on this city lot on Third Street there by the Paseo, the lot does not charge. And we would actually increase the availability of parking because the valet would shuttle cars to the overflow valet parking there at Food for Less. This would be a pilot project. It would provide predictability and certainty to patrons that are coming downtown. I think it would be a very good amenity for the downtown. And we have met with the Santa Ana Business Council and Downtown Inc. to explain this, and we have received good input from the adjacent business owners and the downtown business community. And again, I emphasize that this is a pilot program, we will come back to the council with the results.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and just wanting to say that I'm very supportive. I think we're moving in the right direction. Valet is certainly leading in our downtown, and we have a lot of underutilized parking structures and parking lots, and this is just a good way to, the city can make some money and then also help the businesses down there, so I support this item.
Second.
Is there any other comment?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now I'll wait for the mayor and councilmember Sarmiento to enter back in. What was the other item that was pulled? Okay, so if we can go on to 25J as they enter the room.
Start the speakers.
Okay.
Take the speakers first, right?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open up our comment for this item. If I could have Shawna Smith come on up, followed by Gabriela Robles.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am Shawna Smith, the Executive Director of Taller San Jose, which is a workforce and job training program in Santa Ana that's proudly served the residents of Santa Ana and Central Orange County for almost 20 years. I think you all agree that we provide a much-needed and unique asset, providing workforce development that returns young people who may have dropped out of high school and need extra support back to the community as self-sufficient and productive members of their community. And while we've offered this service for almost 20 years, we barely scratched the surface of the need. And expanding, being able to expand our services in conjunction with St. Joseph Health System to the YMCA property would allow us to really serve and outreach to the young people of Santa Ana and Central Orange County, and I think provide a project that is really something the city could spotlight as a progressive focus on health and wellness, which aligns very well to the city's strategic planning that's emerging as community members come together, focused on health, workforce development, and services for people particularly in the downtown area where there tend to be a lack of services. So I hope that you will consider the proposed project, which I think is one that will take care of a blighted piece of property in the downtown corridor, and will do so in a very short-term process. I think you can guarantee that this team will see the project through to completion and will be done so by organizations that have a strong reputation in the community for providing really effective services and who are longtime members of the community. So we look forward to and are grateful for the city staff's encouragement and support of this project, and we look forward to being part of the development of that downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker is Gabriela Robles, followed by Annette Walker.
My name is Gabriela Robles, and I'm the Vice President for Community Partnerships for St. Joseph Health. I just want to share with you the commitment that we've had here in Santa Ana from the beginning of our existence here in Orange County. We have a foundation, a grant-making foundation, where we partner with organizations here in Santa Ana for over 27 years. We've invested over $9 million in grants in really helping organizations address the needs of our communities. In addition, through St. Joseph Hospital in Orange, just down the street from here, we've invested over $25 million through our community benefit efforts, and it's truly our commitment to address the needs of our communities at all times. And for us, this project represents the future. It's not just about having a hospital and serving those who are sick. It's to provide a space for wellness, a space where community can come together, a space where community can work together towards addressing issues beyond just clinical. So we see health very broadly, and through our investments and our commitments through so many years, it demonstrates that we're in it for the long term, and we hope that you will support our efforts through the YMCA building. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robles. Next speaker is Annette Walker, followed by Michael Hera.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Annette Walker, and I'm Executive Vice President of Strategic Services for St. Joseph Health. You know, the Sisters of St. Joseph came into Santa Ana nearly 100 years ago, and they came here to serve the community. And now, as the St. Joseph Health System, we continue that tradition. We do needs assessment on all our communities that we serve and that we participate in. And one of the things that was identified here in this community of Santa Ana was a need for a fitness and wellness center. We have been looking for a site for over two years, and we think we finally found one in the YMCA. And working together with Taller San Jose, we think we can make this a beautiful community asset again. St. Joseph Health will provide a wellness facility and a fitness facility that will be used by not only the residents of Santa Ana, but also the employees who come into the area during the day. We also envision this site as an area or a spot of community gathering. Taller San Jose will also be in the building and continue their programs. St. Joseph Health is completely committed to this project, and we understand and will work with Taller cooperatively to ensure that this is a successful project, and it is completed on time, and it is financed according to its need. We look forward to opportunity to bring this to Santa Ana, and we thank you for your time and consideration of our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Next speaker is Mr. Michael Hera, followed by Ms. Nancy, I want to say Lundry?
Lockery.
Lockery? I knew that. I was just testing.
Good evening, Mayor Pro temp. What happened to the mayor? They go home?
I think he's eating cookies.
Vincenzo Sarmiento, go home. Mr. Mayor, you back there? You can come out now. Anyways, Mike Hera, I'm Caribou Industries or for the YMCA. We have been working on this for quite some time. We have been here now for 20 years in Santa Ana. We've built out over 4,500,000 square feet, starting back in 1994. We've also built out some of the prominent things that were blighted areas for over 20 years, Original Mikes, the United Auto Building, the Masonic Temple, Santora, the Twist Basler House, which is now in the tennis court for the city. We designed and built and financed $16 million for the Orange County High School of the Arts. We are in the middle of starting the construction with One Broadway Plaza, the tallest, biggest, greenest building in the history of Orange County. All of this is within a few blocks of the YMCA. While I'm here to talk about the YMCA and hope in the fact that this building gets cleaned up, it has been sitting there for now 22 years, and the city has done nothing with this building for 22 years. And while I was building out the city and the 4 million square feet over here, I had constant comments. The comments were, gee, you know what? Who owns that building, and why aren't you doing something about it? There's homeless people living around it all day, all night. It's never cleaned up. It's never guarded. It's across the street from the High School of the Arts. So now, we've come to the crossroads of moving forward with this. And out of seven of the applicants that came forward with this deal, the two, top two, were Taller San Jose and ourselves, Caribou Industries. My interest is to turn this building into something that's really a fantastic piece of artwork, as I've done and proven in the past with over $100 million in projects and historic rehabilitation. I don't believe that the highest and best use is Taller San Jose and rehabilitation of people over there. I think the highest and best use is producing tax dollars for the community and for the city through bed tax and retail sat tax and everything else that would be attributed to what we would do. Also, in the proposal that we did to the city manager, the proposal was in two sections. This is the book here that they had. The first section, Phase 1, basically said, "In 24 months, we'll have that entire YMCA building completely restored." Phase 2 was a hotel behind it. I don't believe that, in this point in time, that the highest and best use is Taller San Jose, but if you so choose to use them, I would like to recommend this. I'd like to recommend that within 120 days or 180 days, that the exterior of the building be painted, the glass windows be, the broken glass be fixed, that the boarded-up windows be, the boards be taken off, and the building looks good. That would go, if you decided to go with us on this, I'd like to also have this tabled and not voted on tonight, and then talked about...
Mike, I have some questions, but the light is red, so why don't you conclude for now, and then we'll bring it to council, and I myself have some questions of you, so...
Okay, good. All right.
So that, and I'm sorry, Nancy Lockery, I believe, something like that?
Lockery.
Lockery, okay? I'm sorry, we, because Councilmember Sarmiento and I were not aware that you guys had come on to another item. Please go ahead.
My name's Nancy Lockery, and I'm the Director of Finance for Taller San Jose, and I just wanted to reiterate how excited we are to be working with St. Joseph Health in this project. The joint occupancy of Taller San Jose, who would be moving their operations from the 801 North Broadway building into the Y, and St. Joseph Health and their wellness center, we think will be a real asset to the community and a real investment in the people of Santa Ana. We're very excited about it. As Director of Finance, I know this is a big undertaking, but we feel that we are capable of this, and we do feel that with the help of tax credits that are available for this property, we're very excited about the future for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Does anybody else want to speak on this item, 25J? Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Raya. I work for Hope Builders. Hope Builders is a licensed general contractor that is owned by Taller San Jose. And one of our prime functions is taking the young men who've come through that workforce training and the young women, and putting them to work in a meaningful way, helping to continue to develop their skills. But it's more than just developing the skills as a craftsman. It's the life skills. You can be very talented and still have a rough life. And while I understand the need and, you know, the tax dollar need that the city has, I think it's important to note as well that without building people, those things just fall short. And so I want to make sure that you give that consideration. I mean, obviously, we would be happy to do that, because it would provide employment for some of the young men and young women who come out of the training program. It would house the expansion of the program to meet some of the needs, the unmet needs that go on on a daily basis in this city. And all I can tell you is that when I talk to some of these young men and young women who come through these programs, and they look you in the eye, and they tell you the difference that it has made. I had it just the other day, talking to a young man who was so excited to have completed the training and to have gone on to full-time employment. And I asked him, I says, "How you doing?" He goes, "Man, you know what?" He says, "I'm so happy. I'm so, I'm so happy. My life has finally taken a turn. I didn't know what it was like to feel this way." And I said, "Why do you say that?" He says, "I grew up, you know, I was a motel kid. Get vouchers. That's what I did. Mom was no good. Dad was a drunk." He says, "And now, Taller San Jose and Hope Builders has given me a life back." So, I mean, like I said, I understand the economics of these things, but I guess I just want to drive home the point that there is more to it. And those folks are our neighbors. Those folks are our families. Those folks are out there, and they're part of our community. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I know we're excited about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. With that, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item, 25J? Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Sercarco Barrubias, Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission, and I'm here to support the proposal that the council will be considering today to allow Taller San Jose and St. Joseph Health System move forward with the rehabilitation of the YMCA. I think it's a unique opportunity and at a unique time where the council and this city has approached their planning and also their investment with a different eye, with an eye for health, an eye for investing in the community and the community that lives here, the community that works here. So this will be a very creative opportunity in which Taller San Jose and the St. Joseph Health System will be able to put financing together that traditionally is not available to market-rate developers, which, you know, we have to account for that somehow. New market tax credits, as was mentioned before, is a tremendous tool that will allow for the creation of jobs for people who live here, people who work in the civic center, people who also live in your city. So I think it is also a very unique opportunity in which your staff will be able to look at these deals differently. St. Joseph Health System has a proven record in this community, not only in Orange County, but in Santa Ana, as was mentioned previously, and working with many of your local nonprofits here and also with residents to improve communities, such as the efforts that were done in the Lacey Neighborhood, in which St. Joseph Health System provided, or the foundation provided, a grant for a lot of the organizations who worked in that venture and improved that community and brought a lot of dollars in investment with the related project and the other projects around the station district. So again, I would encourage you to move forward with this proposal and continue to work with the proposal and the St. Joseph Health System to make sure that this proposal, again, benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I've got a couple questions, but let me maybe start with others. Does any other councilmember have any questions, either of Mr. Hera or of St. Joseph Healthcare Systems?
Oh, go ahead. It seems like everybody's eager to jump in, but...
Well, I have questions, but I want to give others opportunity. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few, quite a few questions, actually, and I don't know that they'll all be able to be answered here tonight. Just give a little bit of context background. I mean, as mentioned, it's this building, which has really been a treasure and asset to the city, especially back in its early days, has been sitting vacant for 20-some years, and I think a lot of us have, at different times, hoped that there would be life breathed back into it, and have had different ideas and dreams for the building, the facility there at the YMCA. I really see it as a treasure and asset for our city. And we have entertained different proposals over the years. I know during my, about almost eight years on the council, and even prior to that, I know a number of ideas, proposals have been presented, but nothing has been able to come together, whether it be for financial reasons or because of the retrofit needs of the building and such. I sit on the Development Transportation Committee of the council, along with councilmembers Sarmiento, who chairs, and Councilwoman Martinez. We've discussed, actually simultaneously, doing a request for qualifications, RFQ for both the YMCA and the parking structure, city parking structure at Third and Broadway. And we did go out with an RFQ. That's how we got a list of submissions that we actually, council, did not look at specifically, but we did give some overall direction to our staff. At one point, we discussed the idea of bringing in some experts in the field of architecture, of development, and a number of other professionals as part of the Urban Land Institute to do one day or a day and a half, drill down into looking at both those facilities that I mentioned and looking at what the highest and best use might be, what recommendations, things that they might be able to convey or enlighten us with that we might want to consider. We did that with the Third and Broadway parking structure. We learned quite a bit, enough so that we decided to actually go back out and do, and we reached that conclusion, because we were somewhat underwhelmed with some of the response that we had received, particularly with Third and Broadway. We learned enough out of that one-day session with these professionals in the field of development and real estate, so that we decided to go back out with a new request for qualifications on Third and Broadway. In fact, we're in the process of doing that, releasing that. When it came to the YMCA, we discussed that option, and frankly, I, when we were deciding what to do with the submission that had come in, my recommendation was that we go back out and start over, bring the professionals back in. That was not the direction that we went in. It was nothing, we actually didn't really have the background as to who the applicants were, who the projects that were submitted were. We left that for our staff and consultant. Ultimately, the consensus was that we wanted the consultant and staff to review the applicants and come back with a recommendation of the top three. One of those top three decided to step aside, so it came down to the two that we see tonight. Frankly, it's, I'm torn, just when it comes to this, the conversation and the projects and even the staff recommendation. Frankly, I still feel that it would have been good to go back through the process. Nothing against, again, any of the applicants. I just would have hoped to be able to get a little bit more insight and input from third-party outside folks, to ensure that whatever we are going to proceed with is the highest and best use. To what that highest and best use, that there is something to be said for rehabilitating a building and turning it into a nice hotel at the same time. Rehabilitating people is definitely a worthy cause that we should also consider. And when it comes, again, down to what will best benefit the city, and what's the best use of that, of the facility, you know, again, being able to... of that facility, you know, again, being able to use it to be able to bring folks into town, economic development piece, that's one of our recognized priorities as we go forward in the strategic plan. It's through economic development that we'll have funds, that we can provide services out in the community, and support projects, good projects, good efforts, such as what Tayer San Jose does. Flip side, you've got an organization that's doing phenomenal work, investing into the lives of young people that might otherwise be lost. And that hits home for me personally, because a couple weeks ago, I mentioned that I had a friend who was lost to violence, for whom that may have not been the case, that he had a good, strong job in a support and organization such as Tayer San Jose. So it is something that I'm torn with. Specifically, I mentioned they have a lot of questions, and again, I don't know that they'd be answered, be able to be answered tonight, because one of those, the St. Josephs is proposing a medical facility, or a health and fitness facility, sorts of reference that they have currently operate, others, at least one other one in Orange County, I believe, up in North Orange County. And I would be very interested in having the opportunity to better understand, to actually walk that place, that facility, understand, get a visual for what we might envision here at the Y. Obviously, we have this item before us tonight, so that's why I say that some of the questions may not be answered. For me, what we received from, in the report, was very vague, very general, as to what both actually the applicants, what they might be proposing. So, there's a lot of, again, questions I have, what types of services are going to be provided. It will, in the St. Joseph-Tayer proposal, will the number of clients served, will it grow exponentially? I just learned right now for the first time that the operations of Tayer might be moving, would move over to the Y. So what, you know, there's, again, a lot of question marks in my mind. So I just wanted to make mention, again, give a little bit of background, state where my thoughts are, and I'm more inclined to actually request, suggest a 30-day continuance so that we can drill down, and have the opportunity to feel good about our decision, and again, that Tayer and St. Josephs won, seems like it's a worthy effort and cause. I'm going to hold back on making a motion, because I do want to hear from some of the other, my colleagues on the council, and maybe, you know, they might have some...
I have questions as well, and let's just hold off on motions, but if it comes to the time when you're ready to make that motion, I'll be happy to second it. Angie, and then I'm going to come over here to Vince, and then Roman.
I'm ready to support this staff's recommendation. I know Tayer San Jose provides a lot of services for our young high schools, gives opportunities to our high school dropouts to regain their life back and get back on their feet, and as a school teacher, I don't see how I cannot support that.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Vince Armento, and then Councilman Reyna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank our staff, and thank my colleagues on the committee. I chair the Development and Transportation Committee, which this matter came from. And this RFQ was proposed by the committee members, and it's been a long process. I believe this discussion and this conversation started in August or September of last year. In any event, I want to thank the applicants, all the applicants, because the pool was much larger than just Caribou and St. Joseph and Tayer San Jose. I do have questions specific to the applicants that I'd like to pose, and one of the reasons why is that, once the procurement started, in other words, once the interview by the panels began, I think, as I did, my colleagues on the subcommittee stepped away. And we obviously want to do things in a transparent way, but also in a way that will be fair, will be objective, and will be neutral. And I believe Kaiser Marsden and some others sat on the panel and made up the committee to ask questions. And this was supposed to be a streamlined, short process, a request for qualifications. Normally, that's a very condensed and compressed period of time. This is the longest RFQ I've ever been involved with, and I sit on other regional bodies, and they're supposed to be very streamlined. I think one of the reasons why it stalled a little bit was because, as I think the council member said, we pulled it back, and we went out a second time, and we wanted to get more interested parties. Unfortunately, there wasn't, and I don't know if it was for lack of outreach, or maybe this is a very troubled asset, which I think it may be a combination of the two. Very few people are going to look at this asset and get excited about it, because the first thing you realize is that, even though it's a beautiful building, it has some very serious logistical and structural problems. There's retrofit costs that are going to be involved, there's, just to make it habitable for the public, there's going to be an investment of approximately $8 to $9 million that's going to be necessary. And we know this because we've gone through our feasibility studies, and we realized it was just going to be very challenging. So, I thank those who did submit proposals. What I guess I'm troubled with is that, now that we've gotten a decision from the panel that did the interviews for the two proposals that remained, for the prevailing proposal, what I'm trying to figure out is, how is it, based upon the financials, is there, I see the proposal as speculative, because I see fundraising in it. Anytime I see fundraising, that's when I start getting confused, because if a person is going to submit an application for a request for proposal, or, excuse me, a request for qualifications, their financials should be in order. In other words, there shouldn't be any doubt of monies that are going to be secured, there's maybe a letter of intent from a lender. Tax credits are great, but we know that that's a competitive process. That means that you compete with other very worthy applicants as well for those tax credits. What makes you certain that you're going to prevail? I want to be candid with you, and the minutes are clear, and the record is clear of my comments on the subcommittee meeting here on this council. When I wanted to have this city asset be circulated for procurement and development, I wanted something that was going to generate revenue for the city, because I see this as a public asset, the people's asset. So if we were going to turn it over to somebody to develop it, I wanted money to be generated from it. I wanted bed tax, I wanted TOT, I wanted something that we could recoup our investment on, because that, to me, is the responsible thing to do. But again, going to a procurement, we have to, at some point, delegate that responsibility to a neutral third-party panel. But my question is to you, I know Tayer San Jose does great work. I know the nuns that work there, I knew the sister that was responsible there, I've been nothing but a supporter and a fan. But to take on the responsibility of developing a major asset in the city, with costs that are going to be, according to you, close to $17 million, where is the money going to be secured from? I shouldn't end it with a dangling participle, that was bad grammar on my point, but sorry about that.
So, good questions, and I think if Tayer San Jose was standing here alone, they'd be even better questions. I think in looking to partner with an organization like St. Joseph Health, we hoped to address some of those concerns about Tayer San Jose as a standalone's ability to manage a project of that scope, you know, just in developing it, as well as doing the fundraising. You know, St. Joseph Health, and Annette can speak to the breadth of resources that they have in the way of expertise and finances, and I'll let her do that. I think what Tayer San Jose has already been able to leverage as a result of the excitement around this project, is a $10 million commitment in new market tax credits from Lisk as an initial vote in favor of the project. So we've already begun our fundraising campaign, and we've already begun the groundwork to apply for and to gain the new market tax credits we'll need to do this project, from the Tayer San Jose side now. Annette?
You know, St. Joseph Health is a $5.6 billion organization, but almost every effort we do involves fundraising, because we know that many of the causes that we are involved in, people are willing to support, and we're a not-for-profit. So, the use of fundraising does not necessarily denote our dependence on fundraising to complete a project. We are committed to this project, and we are willing to back up Tayer San Jose if they did encounter problems in fundraising. We're committed to put in the $18 million to make this a successful project. In regard to your comments about revenue, I completely understand that those are the realities that face some city governments, but I would ask that you would entertain some other things that this would bring to the city, that would in turn perhaps generate other types of revenue. Jobs is one of them, both the jobs and the employees that Tayer and its enterprises generate, but also the Wellness and Health and Fitness Center itself will generate jobs that will bring money into the economy here, as well as the impact it has on the health of this community. You know, Orange County is one of the wealthiest counties in the world, but this particular area where this gym is intended to go, or this fitness center, is one of the poorest health indicators in the country, and we really need to make a difference there. And that's one of the reasons we want to do this. And I think that needs to be counted in well above, or at least equal to, what perhaps the bed tax might bring to the city.
And thank you for that comment. I agree with you, I think that it's, again, it's a worthy benefit, nobody's being critical of the purpose. I think it's also, it's just trying to find out whether or not this can be realized. Would St. Joseph be willing to advance the money to Tayer for this effort, and have them backfill with the fundraising?
St. Joseph is willing to guarantee that this project will be completed.
Okay. Now, one of the things I think that we also discussed at the subcommittee was the ability to have the Wellness Center be open to the public, as well as just folks who are in need of the services. In other words...
Absolutely.
We had a proposal, early on, when I was a new member of this council, seven years ago, or six years ago, I think the developer's name was David DiRienzo, he wanted to do a city downtown gym that people could come and use, whether they're, you know, judges, attorneys, people who work in the county. Because that YMCA used to be a place where people used to gather to do exactly that, play basketball in the gym, go work out in the workout facility. Would you be willing to open that up? Because I couldn't understand in the proposal whether that was part of the element of what your concept was.
Absolutely. It's part of our business plan, that this gym be able to serve the community and everybody in the community. We have a similar facility up in Napa, where there's people with varying abilities to pay, and who have varying, well, varying abilities pays is probably the best way to say it, but it's part of our business plan that there be people in the business sections of this community who commute in during the day, that they would have access to that facility. It's also part of our, I want to say, our vision, that this facility be restored to as close to its original use as possible, and that's what the YMCA was. It was always a community asset for wellness for whoever was there. So yes, to your answer, that is part of our plan.
My last question is parking. It's a structure that doesn't have any onsite parking. It's part of the downtown, it's part of the Civic Center, so we know that many buildings and many uses don't have onsite parking. There's a structure behind you, it's a multi-level structure, but it's not connected, or, not just physically, but there is no nexus between ownership on the Y and the facility itself, and the multi-level facility. How are you going to park your folks if you're not able to secure some sort of reciprocal agreement with that multi-level structure?
Well, we have indicated that we would need to have the city consider a parking variance for us, but a parking variance doesn't really satisfy things if the people who need to get in the gym can't get into the gym. You know, we looked for a site for over the last two years to put this facility into, because we really wanted, or committed to this neighborhood, and we believe that this is a pedestrian neighborhood, and that people do walk it, and there will be plenty of access to people to walk this facility, in addition to some of the new services, the bus or the rail line that's going to be coming very close to this location, that if the city is willing to grant variances to the typical requirements of parking, we don't believe it's going to be a problem to our business. And for Tayer?
You know, I would just add that, you know, our clients also primarily use public transportation. We currently live in that corner and have been able to arrange parking with the facility. It is my understanding comes a lease on the parking structure, at least for a period of time, that would be more than adequate for the needs that we're proposing. You know, I think parking is an issue downtown. Many of the people that we would be serving actually work in the Civic Center and are currently parking in those structures. So, we're talking about a lot of the same individuals.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for answering those questions. I came in at the tail end of the comments by the other applicant, Mr. Hera, but I think one comment that I did hear him say is that, within 120 days, he'd be willing to at least cure some of the attractive nuisance issues that were there, the boarded-up windows, maybe some of the fencing, some of the look on the exterior. Would you be willing to address and do the same thing? Make it look at least better than it looks now, so we can kind of start improving from the outside? Because normally, the way rehab works, you go from the inside out, but does that mean it's going to sit there in the condition it's in for the next two, three years? So would you be willing to do that, and advance maybe the improvements, not the whole thing, maybe just the facade, so it looks better than it does now?
I would just say, I mean, I think it's our understanding that we're entering into this period to discuss and negotiate those things. I don't think there's anything, at this point, that would cause us to say we're not willing to improve and secure the facility in the short term as we develop it. You know, so I would say at this point, no.
Got it. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I've got questions as well, but let me go to Councilman Reyna, and then I want to jump in here pretty soon. All right.
You know, a former employee of the YMCA, I love that facility. I started off as a lifeguard in the basement there so many years ago, and the architecture is absolutely designed, is beautiful, gorgeous. Not sure how many people know about the history there. Toastmasters International was created there by Ralph Smidley, and then the school district so many years later created a school, named a school after him, today it's called Carr. But they've always had a rich tradition, history of empowering young people specifically with skills, skill base that they're able to utilize and apply those skills to get a job. Unfortunately, Santa Ana really has a high dropout rate, and these individuals are going to need a job. They're going to need skills that they're able to apply. And the history that Tayer San Jose has is phenomenal, changing lives, literally one life at a time, and creating that sustained change where you don't really have to come back with that individual as much as you would in potential other activities. And so that, to me, is creating a strong foundation. As we partner up, mental health is a big issue, so the wellness component of it, I think definitely is an investment in our young people, an investment in all of our residents. And we definitely need that delicate balance, and we do need to generate some revenue to come into our community, we definitely could use as much assistance as possible. At the same time, there's other strengths and other components of our community that need to be invested as well. And I think that's something that you guys do, and something that I'd love to be supportive of. Small question for you, mostly for Tayer. What are the numbers of the services that you have now, and what do you perceive that will take place in the future?
So, we currently serve 350 young people a year through our two facilities in Santa Ana, and this would allow us initially to double, and so double that, so let's say, estimating around 700 individuals a year. To your point, this is not just a quick shot we give young people, we stay with them for two years to ensure that the investment that we've made pays dividends in the community. And so this will be a center for young people to really draw on over a period of time. It also, because we own the facility there on the corner at 801 North Broadway, would allow us elbow room to continue to expand our programs over time, so if this were a Phase 1, that might be a Phase 2 expansion for us. So, in essence, we could triple the number of young people we could impact annually.
You know, I'll leave it with this last one, and I'm sure if we go forward, there'll be some negotiation aspect of it, and earlier you said, serving Santa Ana and the county at Y at large, and I'm sure the rest of the county needs some assistance as well, but I'm really concerned about Santa Ana. I would love to see a high percentage of those residents participating in your program. Whatever that number happens to be, is it 70%, is it 80%, is it 51%? I'm not sure, but I would love the majority of those participants to come from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, then, I'll go, then Councilman Martinez.
Actually, this question is for our staff. Mr. City Manager, what was the process here when it came to deciding what the staff was going to recommend to the council compared to other previous years?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The staff did an evaluation, they looked at their proposals, and they wanted to make a recommendation on that project, which they felt... which they felt was the most feasible. They had a ranking process. We can have staff go over that, but at a very, very high level. This business, this building has been vacant for 22 years. I toured the building. I applaud anybody who wants to go in there and retrofit it to its original condition, $18 million. There are many advantages to this proposal. And one, it goes back to the historic condition. And secondly, it does align with our plan with regard to health and fitness. It will be available. Parking is an issue, but there's lots of parking that's accessible. And finally, the jobs that would be created from this investment. Those were the considerations that we made. One of the things we did question, Saint Joseph's is a $5 billion organization, has deep pockets. I am very familiar with nonprofits being the chairman of a hospital. We always said we would do it, but we would fundraise to the greatest extent possible. That did not mean that we weren't going to do it. We built hospitals and other events. So those were some of the considerations. I do agree with Mr. Hera that the building facade should be repainted, the windows should be done, and that would be part of the requirement that we would make if the council deemed this appropriate.
Well, just what I look at is, number one, economic feasibility as far as being able to fulfill this. Councilmember Sarmiento has been asking a lot of those questions, so I've been listening carefully on what, how you have responded to that. It seems to me that you do have the ability to, for funding sources, in my opinion, that's my opinion, to go ahead and move forward with this. But I, I look at a variety of different things. I look at what is the best bang for our buck, as you can say, when it comes to our community. That is an area that doesn't have a lot of green space. That is an area where there isn't, there aren't many parks. And providing a place where people could go exercise, more importantly, the, the type of education that you give is, quite frankly, extremely valuable in our society. So that, I'm having a hard time shifting right now. I mean, I've, I've made sure that, I'm trying to keep an open mind on where we should go. But as far as, at this moment, we'll wait to see what the mayor comes up with. But as far as I'm concerned right now, you know, as an educator and so forth, it's, it's pretty compelling.
Thank you. If I may, if I could just ask you to step aside for a moment, I want to ask the other applicant a few questions, and I'll probably bring you both back and go from there. Ms. Hera, I just want to ask you, and look, I understand that what we're voting on today is to enter into an exclusive right to negotiate. There's going to be a lot of things that are going to be negotiated. But I think it's important that we have some handle on what's going to be negotiated and what the options are. So I just want to ask you, because they were asked the same question a moment ago by, I believe it was Councilmember Sarmiento, where he said, you know, well, you initially clean up the outside. And they basically said, well, you know, it's part of what, the kinds of things we need to talk about. And I think frankly, it's important because there's cleaning, and then there's cleaning. And this is for staff and everybody involved as we proceed, regardless of who we select. And I just want you to describe, because I know you have a proposal here before us, what would you do and how quickly would you do it in terms of what the outside of the building would, would, would look like?
Yes. Yeah, sure. I, actually, since we own millions of square feet around this area and have for some time, and like I was saying earlier, we're constantly asked, why isn't it cleaned up? So the cleanup part of the deal would be, is that we would fix all the broken glass, take all the wood off the glass that's there, paint the building, and then we would actually add some lighting features, effects, lighting effects that would light the upper part of the building and the lower part of the building, so that the exterior part of the building looks much like the courthouse across the street and the Waffle House. So it actually, in appearance, because it's going to take a long time, we're, we've got a bid of around $13 million to do the rehab inside the building, the structural, the asbestos abatement, the mold, that type of thing. So that is going to take a long period of time. But I think the outside of the box of that building should be handled within 120 to 180 days at the most from the date that whoever you give this to. And, and, and I got to tell you, I'm not adverse to Tyler San Jose getting this property or Saint Joseph. I think that they're an incredibly great group of people. I would, I would be honored to have them as a neighbor down the street of all the space that we have. I just believe that we need to clean up the neighborhood. It's been 22 years, as the city manager said, and it's just been sitting there rotting away, and it's an eyesore. And I personally have spent over $100 million in the downtown Santa Ana area on numerous buildings, restoring them, as you all know, over this period of time. My pride is here, my, my heart is with the city. And at the end of the day, I really want to see the city be the ultimate city in all of Orange County with one Broadway Plaza and other projects. And I would rather, I would rather be more involved on the Third Street promenade and build that whole center section up by the Artist Village than spend my time and money on the YMCA. I just believe that at this point in time, I think that probably what should happen is the building just needs to be cleaned up in a short period of time. They, in, in, in closing to that, I just don't understand why the YMCA has to be that focal point, that gym, the jewel of downtown Santa Ana, like these other buildings, the Masonic and the, and the, and the rest of these places, has to be used as a, as a rehab center or something else. If you look at our proposal, our proposal shows a gym in there as well for the public, as well as the private. It also shows the basketball court being restored, the, the pool being open, the same thing that they're doing as well. I really believe that they have good intentions, and I think it would be a great thing for the community. I just don't know the whole scope of work of what they're going to do there. It sounded to me like tonight that they were, in the building that's at 801 next door, they're going to move those people over to this building and then do something later with that building. I don't know if the city knows the whole scope of work of what they're going to do with these buildings and how long it's going to take. They're going to fundraise it. They're a big company, but what if they can't fundraise it? My deal is, is even if they can't fundraise it and they need more time, I'd still like to see within that 120 days from the day of, if you gave that to them, that they actually come in and they make the building from the outside look like a really great piece in our community and clean it up. I have, again, have no problem with them having the building. I would rather focus my time, energy, efforts, and money on rebuilding the Artist Village area.
Let me just ask you another couple of questions. I know Councilor Sarmiento talked about trying to bring income to the city. You offer a million dollars cash, what, to buy the building? What, what strings are attached? What, what is that?
The, the million, I've offered a million dollars to buy the building as is, where is, no representations, no warranties. We don't need to go, we have the funds to do this first $13 million, which is our first phase to rehab that entire building. Our whole total project is 38 million, but that's a 12-story hotel, which is right next to it, because we own that lot. By the way, we own that parking garage that you guys are renting, that would be their parking garage as well. So we have the parking, we have the lot behind it to build the 12-story hotel, and our first phase was to build out this, this building. I, I can't believe that the city would allow them with all of their funds and all their money in a $5 billion company would say, we'll give you the building for free when I'm offering a million dollars. Why don't you tell them, why don't you pay us a million like him? We'll still give you the building. You can spend 5 million or 18 million. But you know what? The city needs the money. The city needs tax dollars, bed tax, income tax, all these other things, and they're giving everything away. It's amazing. 22 years later, 22 years later, the building now needs to be redone, and we're just going to give it away. We're not going to take a million, and we're not going to take any income tax, and we're not going to get anything from these people. And I imagine you probably don't even get property tax from these people because they're nonprofit. So all those tax dollars are lost. Why do they have to be in that building? I don't know. Maybe they can be down the street. Maybe they should be by a park where people could be outside. Their, their view, their point, what they're doing, the, the type of work that they're doing is commendable. It's tremendous. Why it has to be there, I don't know. But if that's where the city wants them to be, I'd like to see them clean up the outside at the very beginning, do the work inside. And I'd like to see you charge them equal to somebody else. If I'm willing to pay a million dollars, they should pay a million dollars, and they should probably somehow joint venture some money or something with the income that they might make, or if they're making any money at all through the nonprofit. The city, the city needs to have some income, and it can't just give everything away.
Thank you. I've got questions of Saint Joseph's. Anything else you'd like to add? I think you've summarized it well.
That's it. Yeah, I, I wish them the best if they get it. I really do. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, if I can have the reps, representatives, please, from Saint Joseph. And let me just say, and I don't know if you know her, but Eileen McKernie from the Sisters of Saint Joseph. I worked with her many years ago to bring Tyere San Jose to where it is today. So I know very well the benefit and what you've done for the community and how you've grown. And really, you're not just at that corner anymore. You have buildings over there closer to, you know, Santiago and by the Transportation Center, and a lot of the training and jobs takes place over there. You know, when we first started Tyere San Jose, we were just doing benches. And that's all that it was. It was benches, and they would get auctioned off, and, and, you know, had a few, you know, you know, students there, apprenticeships or whatever, and that's all we were doing. So I know Tyere, you know, very, very well. And let me just ask you some questions, because I think we have to weigh everything. One is, as it relates to the exterior, and I, you know, hate to, you know, think that facades are important, but I think if we're going to do this, you've got to really, you know, come back and say, we're going to be aggressive. I mean, I don't even know if me don't team up with Mike and hire him to do some of the stuff, because I'm telling you, he knows how to power through this stuff and get things done quickly. And, and I think that, that is important to all of us. Anyways, any thoughts on, on the exterior, if you really wanted to clean it up? I mean, what I don't want to see is like, you know, a green construction fence around the exterior, and three years go by and we have a green construction fence, because you're working on the interior, and that could easily happen.
Well, I, I don't believe that will happen. I feel a little bit out of deficit, because our construction company is not here tonight, and he would really be the expert to say that. I think our fear is, is that we don't want to spend a lot of money on the exterior that has to be redone when the historical restoration is done, because we know that will be very specific. And even though we've guaranteed that we're going to have these funds, the, coming up with the $9 million into two businesses that are not going to generate cash, they're going to break even at best to, to be sustainable, it's a lot for us to make that commitment. So with Tyere's $9 million and our million, we want to make sure every penny is spent the best way and spent once the right way. And I guess we kind of assumed that after 22 years, another couple of months was going to be okay. We can talk to our construction people, and I think we could probably come up with some mitigation to make sure we're not wasting any resources, but we can do as much as possible without doing that, if that would be acceptable. If it's not, we'd have to reconsider whether it was going to be money that was going to be over and above the original cost that we've estimated.
Well, you know, we have things like boarded up windows, and I agree, it's been there a long time, but, but if we're going to do this, let's, you know, try to do it right.
We of course-
And let's understand what we're getting into.
Mayor, if I may maybe just have a point of clarification-
Please.
-for the benefit of you, Mayor, and the council. The staff recommendation tonight-
It's exclusive right. We get it.
Well, well, no, I mean, I think the point of the staff recommendation is we're asking you to authorize the city manager and myself to enter into a reimbursement agreement with them. A reimbursement agreement, I think, is important, as I've recommended to staff, because it will make them put some hard money up to reimburse the city for all the staff work that's going to be done. We will then, if you approve this, you're authorizing us to negotiate an exclusive.
We understand that.
You're not approving that tonight. So if you want, we're not doing that tonight. So if there are points that you would like us to include in our negotiation, we would then take it to them and we would negotiate it. We, we will make ourselves whole through the reimbursement money, and then we would bring that deal back to you, the actual exclusive, so that you can approve those deal points. When we bring back the exclusive, if you don't like the deal points that we've negotiated, hearing you express concerns about the facade and all of these things, then you would be free to say at that point what you want to do or don't want to do. So this is really early on in the process. All we're looking for is your authority to negotiate with them, and we'll be bringing that back to you with all the details.
And, and I fully understand that. I just think that it's important, as we give you that authority, that we understand what path we're walking down.
We're just, we're just trying to be transparent.
All right. We, we want to understand as much about this as possible.
We don't mind you asking.
The, the other thing is, I know you talked about the market tax credit, but, you know, until you put the money in there, the market tax credit, just somebody saying, if you put it in, we'll, we'll participate. So it's a good first step, but I don't think we need to read more into it than it is. Look, you know, finally, and, and this is to function, if you pull out of Tyere, which is right next door right now, and move that operation over to the, to the YMCA building, and then leave Tyere empty, and maybe expand in the future, maybe not, do you have any thoughts on that at all?
Yes, we do. And in our, in our proposal, we addressed that we would make that office space available for lease until we needed to use that. So it's also a source of income to cover some of the costs that we would incur in expanding our program.
And once you submitted this proposal, did staff get back to you and ask you questions or discuss things?
Yes, they did.
They did. Okay. Mr. Hera, can I just ask you the same question? Once you submitted your proposal, did staff ever call you back to understand your proposal or discuss things? Please, if you can let them come to the mic, please.
No.
You never got a meeting, a follow-up phone call?
Not, not from the city manager, no.
I never called any back.
You didn't? No, no, but I'm talking about the staff, the people that were working on this project. You, you presented, proposed, anybody ever call you back and said, I have a question?
No. I had a, I had, I submitted the proposal. I had an interview, and that's all.
And after the interview, no more contact?
Nothing else.
All right. I just, for the record, I just wanted to know.
Had they brought that back, we'd be able to discuss more about what we're going to do.
All right. Well, well, look, let me have all you sit down. Let me just tell you, I'm right now, you know, leaning, you know, towards working with, you know, Sisters of Saint Joseph. I like the overall function, but I don't like that, I think staff may be decided early, it's not going to be Mike Hera, and so, you know, to me, that undermines the process a little bit. And I think as we go forward, we have to be extremely diligent in, in what we're doing here, because otherwise, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and unless we get good answers to those questions, you know, we might not end up where we, where we want to be. Yes, Ms. City Manager?
Mayor, just to emphasize to the mayor and city council, we did write questions to Mr. Hera. We have a letter from him with 12 questions clarifying his proposal, and we did that for both the firm that we're recommending and Mr. Hera, and I have a copy here if we want to-
But with the other firm, it seems like we had discussions, we had contact, maybe even meetings, I don't know, and with Hera, we didn't.
We have one, one interview. We have the same process.
You had one interview, and you didn't have any more contact then? All right, well, that answers my question.
Both firms were treated the same-
Thank you. That, that's what I want to make sure, because I had misunderstood from your answer and from his answer. All right, with that, Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm ready to support this item and, and, and give direction to our staff to enter into an exclusive, a negotiating agreement with the renovation of the reuse of the YMCA property located at 205 West Civic Center. And, and, and I want to say the following, and I want to thank Mr. Hera for being here and his commitment to the city, but there are others now that are wanting to continue a, a, a commitment here as well, and so we should welcome that. And I want to thank Saint Joseph's and Tyere San Jose for, for stepping up to the plate. This, this building has been empty, as Mr. Hera, Mr. Hera said, for the past 22 years. No one has done anything about it. We all know what the retrofit, what, what those costs are. And so for someone to, to, to come here, you know, today, and, and who went through a process and is here before us, that's willing to make this a community asset, we should be thankful, because it's been an eyesore for 22-plus years in our downtown. And so I want to commend them. Number two is that when we talk about economic development, changing people's lives, getting people good-paying jobs, that is economic development. people good-paying jobs, that is economic development. These are the young people that reside in this community that don't have good-paying jobs at this moment in time. And this is what we're trying to do, is create pathways, good path, career pathways for our young people. And this is the opportunity that we're going to create, whether it be in the construction field or whether it be in the medical field. And we should be supportive of that, because at the end of the day, the dividends are going to be much greater than the TOT tax that we're talking about and the bed tax, because we're changing people's lives, we're changing families here in this community where they're going to get good-paying jobs, they're going to invest their money here. And this is, this is the work that we want. And so as we look at economic development, I think we're moving in that right direction when we talk about workforce development. As we talk about creating a healthier place for Santa Ana, St. Joseph's is coming in and wanting to create a fitness gym and other centers to create, to provide other services to our community as it pertains to health and wellness. That's something that, you know, us as a city, and we all know here in the county of Orange, you know, the kinds of money that we've not been able to receive from the federal government over the Affordable Care Act, that we've lost millions of dollars and not have been able to provide appropriate medical wellness services here to our community, you know. And so when we have an organization and, like St. Joseph's, willing to come in and do this, again, we should commend them that they're wanting to bring a community asset like this that's going to not only help, you know, the area here in the downtown and focus on our residents, but it's also going to be able to assist, you know, our own employees here who don't have access to gyms currently right now in the downtown, and also the rest of the county employees and the federal and state employees that come here every day that want to be active. And so as we look towards complete streets and wanting to be more pedestrian, having more pedestrian activity within the downtown, there is another opportunity. And when we talk about, you know, possibly a parking variance, look, at the end of the day, I truly believe that we shouldn't have any parking variance and we shouldn't have any parking demand. The reality is this, is that as we move forward, and our mayor is very supportive, and I think this council is very supportive of having a streetcar and wanting more people to walk and bike, look, we want people to walk and bike to that fitness center. We don't want them to go in their vehicle. What's the use if they're trying to become healthier and it's in the surrounding area? It's in our best interest to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through SB 375, which is a sustainable community strategy as well. That's one of the goals that we've committed to here as a council as well. And so I think at the end of the day, it's a great project. I support what our staff is doing. I will say, as we go into this 120-day to the 180-day, it's 90-100-day exclusive agreement and negotiations with our staff, that we do consider that we have St. Joseph's consider the 120 to 180 days to fix the exterior. And that's conversations and negotiations that you have to have with our staff and our consultants, and then that stuff will then come to us. I think you know that it's very important for us, that we don't want to continue to have light there. And so we're telling you here today, as you negotiate with our staff, if this item does move forward for an exclusive agreement, that you consider that as well. And as my colleague Councilman Sarmiento mentioned, that the gym will have access to the entire public. And so those are two points, I think, that we talked about, many of my colleagues up here, that our staff and our consultants and our city attorney, then we were going through these negotiations to ensure that those two points are brought up and then make sure that they, we are going to be able to meet the needs that my colleagues up here have asked for. And with that being said, I'll support the item.
Thank you. With that, and let me call on Councilor Sarmiento. I believe he had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to second the motion and second with comment. I just wanted to recall, as we call for the question, that this asset's been sitting here for many, many years, and the reason why it's being moved today is because those of us on the Development Transportation Committee realized it had been long enough. And I remember, my first year as council member, we had wanted to entertain proposals like this. So I think had we moved back then, we'd be looking at a much nicer building, something that would have been cleaned up and would have been used maybe for the same purpose that we're thinking about today. But I'm glad we're here because it's going to help address maybe some of the concerns that, and I do want to thank Mr. Hara as well, because I think it will facilitate now, you know, tenanting of One Broadway, which is another good thing. Talking about jobs, I mean, that's something that could create tremendous amount of jobs. So this may be the catalyst for that area and may facilitate tenants and people interested in moving into that large structure. And what it does is just creates a lot more momentum in the Civic Center that's been very, very dormant and quiet for a long time. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I just have a comment, and I'll call for the question. It has sat there a long time, but this is a difficult building, and we're not done yet. We're going to go on negotiations, we're going to do some things. Believe me, we've been close before, and I really hope this happens as we go forward. But I remember about 10 years ago, we had UC Irvine ready to come into this building and create the Idea Institute, which later really became Santa Ana College doing the multimedia project on Bristol. And the reason we couldn't put it together here was the university and the colleges couldn't agree how to do it. But that also would have been a great use, and this building really needs a great use, and that's part of the difficulty. Here, I think, the only thing I would like to add to the motion, if it's accepted, is that we don't forget about the pool. We have a lot of people in the area that don't have an opportunity to really, you know, go somewhere and go swimming. If the gym can be available, you know, maybe with the lifeguard or whatever, if some of the public could have access to the pool, I'm thinking especially about kids, you know, it's there. You know, you're probably going to rehabilitate the pool, right? So anyways, if the maker of the motion would add the pool to the gym, I would have.
Certainly to be part of negotiations with our staff and our city attorney and consultants.
Thank you. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And thank you, and thank you to Mr. Hara as well for all the hard work, and let's look at that parking structure. So with that, let's move on. Now, we're still on the consent counter, if you guys can believe this or not. And who had that item? Who had, was that Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes, that was me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And I want to just move the item, but thank staff for doing this, but I want to thank my colleagues, because this was council-led, because I know this conversation was had a year ago, and I believe Councilmember Martinez was somebody who brought it to my attention, and I sat down with staff a year ago as well. But it was also raised to us by many constituents that had to pay these very, very excessive and oppressive fines. So as I looked at the RFCA, it looks like the fines collected are about $8 million. And the city is realizing very little of that. In fact, it was losing money the first two years. And now we're starting to realize some of it back, but it just doesn't look like a good trade-off. And I'm all for pedestrian safety, public safety, but the deterrent effect of this, I think, wears off when people are being fined so heavily with these that they're avoiding the intersections altogether. I think people are realizing that in other cities, these have been looked upon as being excessive. I think many of them unconstitutional, because there are notice issues as well. I know that many cases have been dismissed by judges and folks that have challenged these citations. And I think that we're at a point now where if there was a way to get out of this contract, I'd push for it now. Unfortunately, we have an obligation until June of next year, but I don't think that, I do think that it's outlived its usefulness here with us. So I wholeheartedly support the motion that staff has before us and would recommend.
Mayor Protem would like a second, and now, Councilor Martinez? You have a comment? Let them comment, and then I'll go to you, Councilor Martinez.
I agree with Councilmember Sarmiento. If it was up to me, I'd get rid of the contract today, but we have to fulfill our contract and continue on. The issue at hand is that we've lived through it. I heard a gentleman come up who benefits from that contract, who said, you know, "I haven't received any communication. I would like to have more time to meet with the council members." The reality is, is we've seen how it's crippled some of our folks here in the city with the enormous fines that they receive. And quite frankly, there's arguments made on both sides on whether it does really solve for collisions. There's arguments on both sides, and we can argue that left and right. The reason we know that is because years ago, there was a debate in high school regarding this specific issue, and it was very difficult to find a winner, because there was arguments on both sides. But I tell you what we do have, is we have other ways of educating the public to prevent collisions here in the city of Santa Ana. And this isn't the silver bullet. The cameras, you know, aren't the only ones that are going to be able to solve for that. And I would question whether they really do solve for that. But something else, too, is I travel all over the country, and I remember traveling to Illinois one time, and a good friend of mine, who's a teacher and a coach for a debate team, was driving his students back and forth from the hotel to the competition at the high school. And he was in a 12-passenger van, high up. There was a sign that said, "No turn on red." He was in a different state. He looked over to the far left, he could see it for about a mile and a half, so he could see oncoming traffic. He could see the oncoming traffic before him. He's from a state where you always turn right. If you check your left and your right, you can always turn right. Anyhow, he turned right, he got flashed, he didn't realize, because it was daytime, that he had been flashed. He goes back to the school, picks up another group of students, goes back, makes another right-hand turn, gets flashed again. He got flashed five times. Had there been an officer there who pulls him over, the officer says, "Where are you from?", and he tells him what state he's from, he says, "Oh, you're from out of state. Yes, I'm a teacher and I'm driving kids." Then the officer can be subjective at that point and say, "Well, you're not from here, but there is, you cannot turn on red. Please be safe and go on." And that poor teacher, who's from a state where they don't get paid a lot of money, can feel good about what he does. No, we actually get paid well here. But anyhow, my point is this, is that individual had to go back and go to court to fight all five. And had there been an officer there, they could have warned him, and that person would have never done it again. And that's the problem with these cameras. So I believe in our police, our police chief and our system here, that we can truly make this a better scenario for the city. And like I said, if it was up to me, I'd get rid of them today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment other than Councilor Martinez? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, if we could get rid of the contract today, I would do so today. And I'll tell you that I've been a stickler on this and with our city staff to bring this forward, because it's been long overdue here in this community. It really has been an impediment and it really has hurt, you know, our residents here in this community when they have to pay $500, $600. And not only that, the problems that it costs in the court system, and how many people are having to fight the appeals, and it's just overcrowding. And so it's various systems, not even at the local level, but when you go to the state level and when people are appealing these tickets. And so with that being said, you know, I want to thank our staff for finally putting this on the agenda, and I want to move it forward to support the item.
All right. Any additional comment? Yes, Councilor Martinez?
I just want to say that right before I was elected to the council, I also received one of those tickets, and I didn't know, I wasn't aware of how high those fines are. They're excessive, and I full-heartedly support to move the sign.
Would she have a conflict of interest? No, I'm kidding. Go ahead, Councilor Raina.
I agree with what you've been saying.
Are we ready to vote? I'm ready to vote.
Call the question members.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, Madam Clerk, where are we? Is that it for the consent?
I don't know.
All right, 55A. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before you move that, I'm going to be recusing myself and abstaining from this matter. I received a campaign contribution from the applicant.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 55B.
Move the item.
We have, do we have a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 55C, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 55D.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 65A.
Comment?
Comment? Do we first want to hear from staff?
Presentation, yes.
We've heard from staff some. Do we want to hear more?
Yeah, I think so. They've done a lot of, Robert has done.
All right, go ahead, Robert.
Mayor, members of the city council, I have a very brief presentation to give to the city council. First of all, I do want to address a point that was made about changes. I just want to state for the record that this draft went online last Thursday, and it's been online for four or five days. We did meet with groups to tell them what was in the plan, but we haven't made any changes based on the meeting. The changes were based on the council meeting we had on the 22nd, and that's what we did. So there have been no changes made, no last-minute policy changes, anything like that. I have a lot of respect for people, but I think that might be mischaracterized. This has been on there for four or five days. I want people to know that. And that's a direction from the city council, and everything was on there, the scoring sheets, the analysis, the rankings. It was a complete draft of the plan.
And just to clarify on that, the allegation was that it was within the last 48 hours? Or what was the allegation?
As the date went on.
All right, but you've just addressed that allegation. You're saying it's not the case. There is no meeting right before, no changes right before.
I've met with staff, and I'll state for the record, I've met with staff, and as I met with staff today, again, there have, and look, I've looked through this thing from very beginning to the very end, and there are some, there were some errors that Robert has corrected today in regards just to numbers and to certain areas where the certain amounts, some stuff that was funded and unfunded, wasn't connected to our consensus matrix, and he went in there and fixed those problems. And I'll tell you, when I met with them a week and a half ago, and I wanted to make some changes, they told me specifically that I would have to come and address them here. And so I will tell you that the city manager or Mr. Robert Cortez did not make any changes. And so today, I have items that I want to make some changes, and I'm assuming so do some of my colleagues, because they wanted to make sure that it was transparent.
And that's fine. It's just the whole point of, you know, are we doing it here in public, or was the city manager meeting with Sacred privately? That's what I want to, you know, straighten out. So with that, why don't we go back to Robert?
I'm going to make the presentation.
Oh, please, go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor Palito, members of the city council. A very brief presentation. Let me start out with a big thank you to everybody. No city can rise above its leadership, and we're so grateful to all of you and for the community and all the hundreds of people that have participated. We have had extensive community outreach. The plan is not perfect. If we wait for it to be perfect, we'll never finish it. So what we have here is a lot of progress, and one of the individuals stated best that we've made tremendous progress in Spanish, bastante progreso. We do have seven goals: community safety, youth education, recreation, economic development, city financial stability, community health, livability, engagement, sustainability, community facilities and infrastructure, and Team Santa Ana. We have agreed on so many things. We have 145 strategies. 106 of them can be accomplished with existing funding. So the $400 million budget that Santa Ana enjoys can be done to further these priorities. We do have 39 unfunded strategies. The good news is, is that the funding strategies that reach the general consensus are funded within the $2 million that's already been allocated by the city council when we updated the strategic plan. So we have much progress there. We are asking the city council to review and approve the plan, or a version thereof with changes, so that we can come back on April 15th and get budget approval. And then, once we have those priorities and strategies identified, the points that have been made, we will develop measurements, results, timetables for each of those strategies approved by the mayor and the city council, and on July 1st, we will go to work. That concludes my presentation.[1731.03] That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. I know we've had a lot of means, a lot of discussion. Why don't we -- how about we start over on this end?
I can go last because I'm going to spend a lot.
You're going to spend -- all right, well, why don't we go first with Councilor Martinez then? Let's go first. They defer. They all defer. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that from my colleagues. You know, and I think the reason why I'm passionate about this because, you know, when I first got on this council, this is one of the things that I wanted to do and at the time, we just did not have the support from the majority of the council. And, you know, a year and a half or so ago, we finally were able to move forward and put the funding for the strategic plan. And ever since then, I've been extremely committed and I think I've met with staff more so than anyone and it's not because my colleagues didn't want to, it's just because of the commitment that I have to this plan and wanting to make sure that it was done right. You know, it is the first time, and I will tell you that I'm not 100% satisfied and I think they know that I will never be 100% satisfied because that's just, you know, I think that we always can improve. But I do want to thank Robert Cortez, you know, for your leadership and stepping up to the plate because I'll tell you that we had to go through various stages. You know, we had our consultants, management partners initially were doing this and then we then had Jay Trevino and he then retired and then we needed someone else and our city manager recruited Robert Cortez and he accepted. And so I just want to thank you, Robert, really, truly. And I know I probably have, you know, today, you know, I called him even at the last hour. I'm like, hey, you know, I saw some things, we need to make some changes. And right on, he made those changes and a lot of it didn't have to do with any money or policy, but just some of the things on the matrix and on the work plans and we were able to make those changes. And so I just want to thank Robert for that. I want to thank our entire staff, our employees who engaged in the process as well and of course, you know, our entire community for all the tireless effort that you guys put to making sure that we got here to this point. I will tell you that as I reviewed the plan and I reviewed the work plans, I still believe that we still need more accountability as to how we actually fulfill these projects and I still am going to recommend that we break these down for the council from a policy perspective, from a program and from a plan perspective. And the reason why I say that is that we need to know, we all know that it's not going to -- certain policies are not going to cost money. Certain policies may cost money depending on the route that we go. And so as we look at restorative justice is one example, our police department is going to do the research. And that is a policy direction that we are asking and we're taking. When that research is done, there is going to be a fiscal impact, right? Because we're going to create programs. And so I think it's very important for us to distinguish, again, what a policy is, what a program is, and what a plan is. And you certainly have done a great job of indicating if it's reoccurring or it's one-time monies and I certainly appreciate that. And I also certainly appreciate that these work plans will be going before the council committees as well for accountability perspective for ourselves here as a council, but also holding our staff accountable as well to making sure that we're able to meet our goals and our objectives. And so I'm good with that. I do want to make some recommendations and as I mentioned earlier, when I met with staff about a week or so ago to review the draft document, I was not able to make any more recommendations as it pertained to funding. They told me that I had to come out here and sell, you know, some of the adjustments here to my colleagues and rightfully so. I think that is the right approach. And so I'm here today to plead to my colleagues to hopefully that they will accept some of my recommendations. And I think the things that I am going to be recommending fall in with all the goals of the strategic plan. I just think that we need to align them and make sure that they are incorporated. One example is, as we talk about in our study session this evening, traffic safety is an active transportation. I'm wanting to make sure, and I know that we already have a position within our public works, wanting to make sure that we're able to fund that position. I think having an active transportation coordinator is very essential as we move forward with all these plans, whether it be the circulation element, the complete streets, the bike and pedestrian master plan, our safety education campaign through our police department and what we're doing. I believe that we need one person that is going to be able to deal with this and bring all of this together. You know, we all know that what we've seen this year, and it's only been in the month of March, we're already at six fatalities, pedestrian fatalities, and that is a problem when you have cars killing more people here on our streets than guns. And that's the reality that we're facing here today. And so we need to make sure that we have the appropriate staff that could assist us and moving us in the right direction. And so I want to recommend that we immediately start looking to hire an active transportation coordinator to start dealing with a lot of these issues and certainly our staff, they're starting to integrate it into their work. But I certainly know that they have a lot of other things to do and they're not really experts within active transportation and all the new laws that are coming out. And we just need one person that's going to be in charge to be working with the rest of our staff and our agencies. The next thing that I wanted us to consider, and I know that we've hired, when we talk about neighborhood improvement and community health, from a code enforcement perspective, I did not see, I know we recently just hired some code enforcement officers, but we still, as we talked, I think last year in our budget, that we wanted to hire a total of eight. And so we still have four more folks that we need to hire and I did not see that in the plan and how are we going to get there to hire those four people? We made a commitment to the community last June, this past June, in our budget that we would make sure that we would not make, of course, you know, code enforcement as whole as it used to be, but we wanted to make sure that we had enough officers as we move forward to deal with the commercial and residential. And I still think that we need four more officers and so I want us to consider that as well, whether it goes through CDBG or through the general fund, to give us a direction of how we're going to be able to fund those positions. The next thing that I wanted to discuss, and it's within active transportation, is possibly and it would be considered an event more so towards active transportation. I think many people have heard of Ciclavia in Los Angeles and I've had conversations with our city manager and recently had conversations with my colleague, Councilman Sarmiento. But having Sunday on Main Street, which means that we would close the streets on Main Street between 9:00 and 4:00 p.m. and we would have no cars. We would just have vendors and folks that would be able to walk, bike, run, whatever they so choose, that we would start a pilot and first doing a program like that on Main Street. So that's something else that I would like for us.
Why not Fourth Street?
Well, this is something that, you know, again, is just a consideration as we look at South Main wanting to become more pedestrian-friendly. Yes, South Main and coming into the downtown First Street right there and then going down towards South Main as we're wanting to make sure and changing the dynamics of South Main. I think that would be a great opportunity. My initial one was going down, where they closed down all the streets where the street car was going to go through.
Do you have any blocks that you're thinking about in your proposal?
Again, my initial proposal was from First and Main to Edinger. First and Main to Edinger. Again, my initial proposal was from Santa Ana train station all the way to Harbor and David said, "You're crazy. We can't close all those streets." But I said that eventually.
David is right.
Eventually, that's where the street car would go. And I just, for marketing the street car, I thought that was a good idea.
Look, she conveniently is closing Main Street that she represents. What about to warn her? Just kidding.
Well, again, this is something that we can discuss with our staff, but this is a suggestion that I'm adding because I think it's appropriate. And then I also wanted to talk about, and I think many of the residents talked about this today, the Santa Ana jail and the language with ICE. And I want our city manager, if you could please address, you know, some of those concerns because we did want it to add some language that we would make a commitment to moving in that direction, but what your rationale is and for us to not go there.
Thank you, Mayor Polito, members of City Council, Michelle Martinez. We do have a situation now where we're obligated to meet debt payments for our jail. It's about $9 million a year. The jail has been there since about 1990 and we no longer use it exclusively for the city of Santa Ana. And so in order to make those debt payments, we also have about 100 employees that represent it. So right now, the immediate goal that I'm focused on is to make sure that we're cost recovery and we're working with the federal government to do that. Also are working with our labor groups and with personnel to reduce our costs and hire part-timers to lower our reliance on full-time staff. And I believe that in talking to the residents, I understand their concerns, but whatever we do, we should do when it's economically feasible. We're not there yet. So my recommendation is that we address this a year from now. I know that this is not the end of the issue, but it's very difficult for us to manage this operation at a deficit and the first order of business is to make a cost recovery because when we do that, that allows for more resources for our community.
Mr. City Manager, just say today that this council appeared today was so adamant and wanted to go in that direction and saying, "Look, we want to support our community. We want to end the contract with ICE." What would that mean to this strategic plan and the laws if we did cancel the contract? Would we have to choose the strategic plan? Or, you know, if we were to cancel this ICE contract, you know, could we do both?
The short answer is no. We are operating right now at at least a $3 to $5 million deficit for direct operating costs, not considering indirect costs. And so if we were to discontinue our contracts with the federal agency in question, it would result in millions of dollars in lost revenue. So we would fall further behind instead of losing $3 to $5 million. Could be as high as $5 to $7 million. Again, that would be basically more than the funding for the strategic plan and we would go into a deficit rather than having additional funds for the community.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And with that being said, I still want us to see if we can put in there in the plan that we will come back a year from now and looking at this. I know we don't have a specific time, but if we can please add to add that we will be back a year from now looking at this issue as well. I would greatly appreciate it and hopefully my colleagues will support that language. The next thing that I did have was also, and again, this is, I think, is going to be, this is where the debate is going to begin. But as I looked and I marked down in my own paper, you know, all the different fundings from all the different areas and our goals, I was certainly supportive of the community safety, which will all be, all the things that were unfunded, all of them will be funded and I'm supportive of that if my colleagues support that. As we looked at youth education, recreation, right now, everything is being considered that is not funded to be funded in this plan, which would be over $1,750 for education, which would be the summit partnership stakeholders, summit, quality youth opportunities and the Santa Ana Zoo, the web, doing some web resources for job internships and other youth activities and then the e-library. You know, my question here in regards to the youth sports, the 500K, I would say, and I hope that as we look at equity and we've put this in our plan, that when we choose certain sites within the city to just fund for sports programs, I don't think that we're being equitable because we're not going across the entire city. We're not really meeting the needs of all our young people. My, what I would like to consider is, and it's not here, is to create a city scholarship and where we would be able to even help our nonprofits. I think many of us are supportive of our nonprofits, is that we would support our sports organization nonprofits. There's many kids that are not able to pay to participate, whether it be a little league, whether it be tennis, whether it be Pop Warner football, whether it be all these other. There's a lot of kids that don't have, their parents don't have the money to pay $300, $400, $500 for these kids to participate. And so what I would want to do, all these organizations are citywide, is that we would be able to, say, give $200,000 for scholarships and have our Parks and Rec director to create some qualifications and create whatever that process would be of how we would give these scholarships to these youth to play sport. I think, you know, our mission here is to provide, you know, opportunities for our kids to be active. I think with these nonprofits, if we go across the citywide and the various sports, they still can, we still can meet the same goal. And that's just the recommendation that I would like to utilize so we can utilize some of this other money from some of these other things. One great example is that under infrastructure and community facilities, there is no money for that. I want to recommend, we have all our parks and our community centers. Some of them have been renovated, some of them have not. For example, our parks, you know, the deferred maintenance, you know, the amount of staff that Mr. Mowet currently has now to go to all 29 parks to fix our swings, the restrooms that are broken. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed within our park system. And I believe that, you know, when we want our kids and our families to go to the parks, that the swings work, that the restrooms are clean, that they actually work. There are certain restrooms and I know our staff and our Parks and Rec staff, they do a tremendous job with the resources that they have. But I think that we haven't really made a huge commitment to the deferred maintenance. And I know four or five years ago, our mayor talked about the deferred maintenance on the parks and we were, and even Councilman Bustamante, who was there at the time, of how we wanted to address this issue. And so I want us to consider that as well. And the last thing that I just wanted to talk about was everything else, I'm totally in support of. The economic development, I want to tell you, and the community health, livability, what we're doing here today in making a commitment to our business community is amazing. What we're doing to become more innovative and efficient with technology is amazing for this community and this city. As we look at the community health, livability and engagement and sustainability, what we're trying to do here and what we're going to be able to accomplish, whether it be promoting our arts and culture, whether it be in creating a neighborhood improvement program, doing more health access points within certain areas, certainly very supportive. And I will tell you that something that is very important as I look at Team Santa Ana, for a very long time, not only have we ignored a lot of key, important issues within our community, for example, our youth and health within our city, but we've also, because of the lack of resources, have not put a huge commitment within our employees here in the city. And, you know, the commitment that we are making here today, and it's not a large commitment, it has the smallest amount, but it's a token of our appreciation here, I think, on this council and our city manager, letting our employees know that we care about you. We know that, you know, many of you work here in the city of Santa Ana. We want to make sure that we provide you with the resources and tools so that you can become successful professionals, not only here and be able to move up. You know, I know we just hired recently two new folks. Well, Alma Flores was already working here in the city of Santa Ana, but she's now back at our city manager's office and we have Jorge Garcia. I could see Jorge one day becoming our city manager. He's a bright young man and had the opportunity to work with him these past couple of weeks and plenty of emails. But I tell you, you know, these people, Alma and Jorge are the future of Santa Ana. And we look at Anna here, hopefully after her internship, we will find a position to hire. She may become the next volunteer coordinator, internship coordinator here in the city of Santa Ana. These are three bright young people that are working here in the city of Santa Ana. And as we move forward with bringing on our internship program and our volunteer program, there too, we're going to have opportunities for young people that want to be engaged and understand the city. Will have the opportunity to come to work for City Hall within these internship programs and eventually have the opportunity to be in these positions as well. And so I think what we're doing here is great. You know, these are my comments right now. I may have more as my colleagues speak and I will leave it at that for right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Want to go to the left and then we'll come back this way. Is that okay? All right, let's go, please. Angie Mescola.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I think it's important for us to keep in mind that the strategic plan is a living document. It's a framework. It's a roadmap to help us get to where we want to be. And we can always revisit it and I think Councilmember Martinez brings up some good points and I think we'll have to, you know, talk about how it's going to look if we are going to move forward with some of the recommendations that she made.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna, please.
You know, first and foremost, the fact that our city took on this task was absolutely huge. We haven't had a comprehensive strategic plan in many years. So the fact that that was on the table and that we're at the level we're at is a huge success. I think it's a great feather in our cap. Is it perfect? No. But then again, I can't think of anything that's perfect. It's a living document. We'll continue to work on it. We'll continue to fix the bugs out of it and continue strengthening the ones that are successful. So on that end, I'm very pleased where we're at. There's always, like I said, there's always some challenges, but overall, I'm happy with the entire process of where we're going. Couple of comments as we're going forward. One of the things that I definitely like to see in here is timelines and benchmarks to see how we are growing and are we meeting the expectations that we need to do so? So I think that is definitely key and critical. I think along with what was key and critical is to ensure that our departments do what our departments do. As an example, recreational department does recreational activities. They're not necessarily an educational component. The education component comes through the school district or through Santa Ana College or through other nonprofits that offer academic assistance. So recreation, we need to make sure that our departments do what our departments do and not have them do anything else. It'd be difficult for our police officers to put out fires. That's not what they do. So we need to ensure that that's exactly what we're looking at. As we look forward and trying to get the biggest bang for our buck, we all know that I'm very youth-oriented and trying to get as many youth programs as we possibly can. Personally, I'm a basketball player. Unfortunately, we can only put 20 people on a basketball court at any particular five, five on each team, five subs, so we only get 20 students that could potentially play basketball. So it hurts that we can't get more on that basketball court. But what we can get more on is track program, cross-country program, a swimming program. These are activities and programs that we can put in hundreds and thousands of kids for minimal cost. So reaping the benefit of our investment in those particular aspects are huge. Not my sport of favor, but again, impacting our kids that are dropping out, that are on the streets, that don't have many options, here's an opportunity to gaze them in a healthy aspect. And as we continue to push the health aspect of it, it goes coin line right with that. I definitely, some of the recommendations that my colleague had mentioned, I think we can, we need to invest more, absolutely so. I'm not sure if you're talking about CDBG funds or general funds, but those are definitely conversations that we need to continue to have. I think in the past, the majority of the funding for CDBG was focused on nonprofits. At some point, it seemed to not completely move in that direction. I'm more than happy to open up that conversation and dialogue to completely to do so. Just not sure what I really want to do with our general funds when we have other options. But overall, I'm happy where we're at. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start by thanking everyone who took part in this effort. It is a rewarding time, there's a lot of things that we do on the council. Frankly, more often than not, it's a thankless job, we get more criticism than anything else. Last meeting was for an example. But it is, it is nice though when we're able to look at a significant project, efforts, more than a project, but really setting the course for continuing to move our city forward, to see progress, something that will outlive probably all of us here on this council, but that we'll be able to walk away with, knowing that we locked arms with our community, with the business community, the residents, our employees. And as a council, we collectively were able to come forward and set the course for, again, just the continued progress of our city. So it's rewarding, it's one of those things that it feels good to be able to be considering this. I do want to thank, again, everybody from our employees and the focus groups and the members of the community who took part. And it was refreshing and encouraging to see the folks who did come out and speak, that they were celebrating the work that they've done, they've completed. That hasn't always been the case, they've worked hard last number of years, some of the efforts, the projects that were referenced, Station District, Sunshine Orange and a number of others. It hasn't always been the case that folks came here with the, being able to enjoy and celebrate their accomplishments. And there's a lot of accomplishments that you all have to celebrate tonight as we consider this strategic plan because you helped shape it. So I'm glad that that tone is one of celebration and one of feeling that sense of pride and success. Again, assuming that it gets adopted, I'm confident that it will. With regard to some of that, also overall, we've been hashing this out for quite some time. I had the privilege and opportunity to be a part of the ad hoc committee of the council, so I've been looking at this, you know, very closely with my colleagues, Councilwoman Martinez, Councilwoman Reina, talked with our consultants, with our staff for months. And so I feel very, very good, very positive with the outcome, what we're looking at here. Couple of minor things that I did want to look at or suggest, one is on, and it's just a language thing, and I think I asked my colleagues to indulge me in this one modification, or on page 16, the community safety, which is GO1, item 6F, where we talk about the reentry programs. It reads that Santa Ana PD will collaborate with Orange County Probation Department, Orange County Healthcare Agency caseworkers and associate nonprofit organizations. I just want to include in there, and the business community, to assist in reentry and recently released offenders into the community. Just a minor addition, but there is, when we talk about reentry, I think one of the main things that would assist in helping people reincorporate, reintegrate into society is having a job. And I just want to make sure that we incorporate, that we are mindful of reaching out, getting our business communities partners. When it comes to the items, Councilwoman Martinez did comb through the strategic plan, and there's a number of items that were there that I think are very good considerations. A number of them were more related to potential funding and positions, and I think we are going to be here in the spring, going to be looking at our budget, right, and looking at the forecasts. And so I think some of those are going, some of those would be something that would be a great opportunity for us to consider, you know. At that time, it seems to make sense to me. The one that is more an initiative oriented that I very much am supportive of, I've heard a lot of our residents that have gone out to LA for the Sacred Villa, and my family out there who lives in LA have mentioned it, and I think that would be phenomenal for us to include in here. So that's one thing that I would like us to go ahead and incorporate. Again, some of the other items, I think, are more dollar figures that might be appropriate to consider when we do look at our budget reforecast, which we did, when we did approve the budget, we mentioned neighborhood, the code enforcement, we said we're going to look at that as a priority. Several of the other items that were mentioned as well, deferred maintenance of parks, definitely something that I think needs to be a priority. So when it comes to the language with regard to ICE, it's there where we're saying that jail operation, Santa Ana PD, department operation is something that we're going to be looking at. So I just want to make sure that we, I mean, it's there, and I think that'll suffice for us to continue to look at that and make any adjustments. There were some comments earlier with regard to, and it's kind of off, not necessarily specific to the strategic plan, but the idea of the ICE detainers and honoring those. I know we addressed this at Public Safety several months ago, I think about eight months back, and we changed our policy, stepped outside with Chief Rojas, which, who did confirm that. So we are addressing some of those, we have addressed actually some of the questions, concerns that were brought up, maybe, I think some of that information was provided, but maybe all the folks that came and spoke, they missed it, or maybe were not made aware. So I believe that might be all of my items for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to my right, why don't we start with Councilor Miento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to make this brief, I just want to thank the staff for all the hard work. I want to thank all my colleagues that had an opportunity to participate in this. I want to thank our city manager for answering my counsel, my colleague to my right's question about the jail and taking this up maybe when the time is right. I think that's the responsible thing to do. I also want to support her, Michelle's comments on the youth scholarships, if there's some way we can carve out from something else to maybe try to look at that. But I'd like to broaden it, and I know our director of Parks and Recs is here, he knows that soccer is the most popular sport in the city. I love, you know, again, not my sport either, I love tennis, I love football and baseball and basketball, but really, we need to, as we've taken direction from our residents on this strategic plan, we need to take direction from them as well as to what sort of sports we need to provide and what support we can provide that particular sport. There's thousands and thousands of kids and adults that play that sport. It's the most popular sport in this city, and we've known that because there's just a lack of open space for that. So to the extent we can incorporate that into the other traditional sports like Little League, Pop Warner, let's do that.
And I think we can.
And I think we can as well. Finally, I just want to say, we're just so tired, we'd love to celebrate with everybody, it's a historic day, but it's, but I think everybody's just a little exhausted. We've come a long way, this is an imperfect document, as was mentioned a few times, we hope that we will get it right one day, but it's the first step in many. And taking that first step is very difficult, it's never been done. So I want to thank all of you, and for those that think that this was governed or dictated by one group, that's not the case. It wasn't sacred, although they played a very important role because they took it seriously. I listened to people who commented to me from Comlink, I listened to people from the Chamber, I listened to people from South Main Merchants Association, I listened to just the person next door to me. So I listened to many comments, and I tried to think about those thousands of people who never came and commented here to us, because that's whose lives this is going to affect, not just the speakers, not just the advocacy groups, not the associations, but those folks who are so busy working, raising their families, trying to put food on the table and pay their rent, that's what this plan is for. And we never saw their faces. So that's what's been governing my decision-making, is thinking about that person that doesn't have time because they have responsibilities with their own families and life to be able to come here and comment or remark. So that, to those of you who think that it was one group or it was another, that's not the case. This is a city of 350,000 or close to, maybe more, maybe less, but it's a large city. So the decisions aren't easy. So when somebody says, this is what I want in this and why aren't you including that? Well, what about those folks who can't be here? What about those folks who don't own computers to be able to get on a survey and log on? How are they going to be, how are their concerns going to be addressed? So that's what, to me, was most important, to consider those folks. So I hope nobody is offended, this is the first step in one of many, let's be happy that we've taken it, and let's just try to create a better document as we go on. But I want to thank you all for being patient with us and working through this with us because it's been an important first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, again, thank you to everyone. I have to echo what Councilmember Sarmientos stated. When I first heard about the community outreach, where everyone got together and different people came in, and I heard about how many people showed up, and you saw the diversity there from neighborhood groups, from sports groups, from sacred groups, from Latino health access, I mean, it was a wide range of individuals. I don't know if you remember that, Mr. Moet, but it was a wide range of individuals who came together and placed what was most important to them on those sheets. And like Councilor Sarmientos said and others have said, it's our first bite at the apple here. And I thought for our first attempt, this was probably, and I've been an elected official now for 14 years, both with the school district and here with the city, and I have never seen that type of openness towards the community at any time until now. And to see so many people come to the table, and quite frankly, it created a good strategic plan. And it created a good strategic plan. And it's no secret to all of us here, I mean, I look at every single individual here, you know, we're big on after-school programs, we're big on sports programs, and the reason why we're big on those is because that's what saved us. We were Santa Ana kids from immigrant families. Some of us saw people get deported from our own families. And that's why I get a little frustrated when people come up that are younger, and the youth is great, but sometimes the youth also has to talk to us and hear our story. Because I lived in Santa Ana, when they would wait and put public comments at the very end because they knew that my mom had to take care of the kids and cook dinner, so she never got a shot to speak at the mic. Those are the kind of upbringings that we had as youngsters. Wow, how the city has changed, because now people have a voice. And that's the beauty of it, and you have a receptive council. So just because you don't get everything you want right away, at least give us the benefit of the doubt, to at least give you the information, because it's not always black and white, it's very complicated at times, but we're doing our very best to meet the needs of our community. Because the community that you talk about is also the community that is our, that are our family members. What I would like to see, and this goes outside of the strategic plan, well, before I go there, I want to thank Councilmember Michelle Martinez. You know, Councilmember Michelle Martinez is animated, she's fun to have around because she's animated, she's passionate, and she's great to have at a party. The party just never ends. But here's something about her that I've always stated, is that I remember years ago, when we first got onto the council, and she looked at our budget, and she says, we're in trouble, we're going to be in trouble in a few years. And she kept telling us, to the point where she would get so frustrated, she was right. She was right, and we listened right before it was too late. And she is right, that she wanted a strategic plan way back when she first got on here. So for her, it's a special day today that we have a strategic plan that we can move forward with. And that's perseverance. And I look at Councilwoman Martinez, who has gone through an enormous amount, I mean, you talk about people coming up and saying, we don't understand, you have no idea what Councilmember Martinez has gone through as a youngster. If she can make it, anybody can make it. And here she is fulfilling something that was very dear to her heart, and that was the strategic plan. Everyone had a part in it, but I don't want to not have that moment to thank Councilmember Martinez for what she did. But here we are, here we are, a new day in Santa Ana, a day where people get to talk and to be listened to and to have input. Isn't that great? You have input. Where years ago, we didn't, you could clap for that, you can clap for that, I give you permission, I'm the Mayor Protem. But we have the ability to do that. And I just want to say, it's a great day for Santa Ana, and this is going to be the step in the right direction that's going to propel us. Guys, everything's in place, everything's in place, we have a wonderful staff up there, we have a city manager who's bringing in high-quality people, we have a city attorney who's bringing in high-quality people that are saving money for the city, that will then go back to more programs and more resources for every single individual here. It's a new day, and the sun is shining bright on this city, and I thank everyone for their hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead, Ms. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Member City Council, I just want to make sure we have clear direction because we will be coming back in April with the funding adoption. Number one is the need for a traffic safety coordinator. We can do that with existing funding by reallocating a lower priority position. With regard to code enforcement, we don't have funding identified, but we can make that a high priority for CDBG funding, I think that's a good use for that. The Sunday Main event, we can do with existing funding, I think we have the capability to do that. And then finally, I did hear about the breakdown by policy and program, to make sure we have a timeline and benchmarks, and we will do that. And the last area where we don't have clear direction, which I want to make sure we finish, is we do have $500,000 identified for youth and education and year-round sports programs. And I think Harado has done a good job of identifying eight sites that were based on easy walking distance to make sure that we could do that. But I also heard the need for some scholarships and the development of a program. So with your permission, I would like to come back as part of the budget adoption with maybe $150,000 or $200,000 and ask that you review that for adoption in April.
You know, on that end, I'd like to, I'd like to sit in on that discussion when you start talking about scholarships and what that may look like.
Yes, that'd be great.
I definitely want to be in it because there's a lot of need out there, and to try to come up with some kind of criteria that's going to be inclusive and not exclusive, I think is going to be opening up for some challenges. So I look forward to the conversation, I definitely want to be at the table.
Mr. Councilwoman Reina, that's exactly the point I was trying to make. I don't think we're going to be able to do that by July 1st for our, actually, Harado has kind of started to make sure we can do that, but we will quickly develop a program, criteria, bring it to the council, and then all we're asking for in April is to identify the funding, but you would approve the actual allocation process and criteria.
Just going to move slower than anybody wants.
Yeah, because, again, I'm not saying I don't support the scholarship aspect of it, I just think there's a lot of questions when we start talking about that.
Sure.
And I'm concerned about that student that's way in the back that hasn't stepped up for any other programs, and then we might end up putting together a process that will be exclusive to those particular opportunities for those students. So I'm cool with investing more into our youth, I just want to make sure that the process that we create is something that our entire community can participate in.
And I think this is, why I'm supportive of creating this sports scholarship program is because the $500,000 is only for eight sites. We have 29 parks, seven community centers across the city, so when we're just choosing eight specific sites, we are excluding other youth, because we all know, Roman, we grew up in this neighborhood, we grew up in this city, that we can't go from one area town to the next and walk and think that you're going to go and play basketball, it's virgin when you live on the other side of town. You know what happens. So when we're talking about sports, we want to make sure that we're able to have a net that's wide enough, and I think just specifically putting $500,000 for eight sites to provide those youth sports, and I think they're important, but we also need to make sure that we are equitable across the board, the entire city, not just focus on eight sites. And possibly those eight sites that Mr. Moet has designated are probably very needed sites, and I get it, but then, of course, there's other areas of our city too beyond those eight sites where other kids would like to participate, like participate in NJB, where their parents don't have the money to pay for NJB, right? They don't have the money to pay, right now, we only have 10 scholarships for tennis at that center. How about if we were able to give 20 more of those scholarships to the city where kids can play? Or how about soccer, where, you know, people can't afford to play soccer because it costs money and Pop Warner? So that's what I'm talking about, it's just trying to be equitable.
And I completely support that, I'm just not sure if I'm comfortable with taking money out of our general fund and giving it to a nonprofit. Just not sure if I feel comfortable.
And we're not doing that. It's all going to come back. It's all going to come back, and what I suggest is any passion or any specific things council members want, go ahead, meet with the city manager, put it on the table, try to see where it fits within the plan and come back. And we go from there. A couple suggestions I have is... A couple suggestions I have is, Councilwoman Martinez was talking about how may we spread this out? Maybe in certain places, we could go for nonprofits to join with us and to try to lever those dollars. So if we're going to put so much money, we try to see if there's a match out there. There might be grants, there might be things that if folks know we're doing this, they might be able to join us. Also, we might, in certain cases, combine things. For example, with the tennis, part of what I've been trying to do with Vic Braden, that whole program, is try to get kids to teach kids. So you might all of a sudden be able to create a job because at X dollars per hour, somebody gets qualified that are a certain level, and now they're onto a different path. And we're doing jobs, and we're doing sports, and we're doing, you know, many of the different goals that we have at the same time. So I think it's time to think out of the box. I think staff is going to take some time, and they should, because it's difficult to implement things. And look, and at the end of the day, it's going to be the budget. And every year, it's going to be what we approve in the budget, and that, you know, the plan doesn't change that. And so we also have to be looking at the budget and saying, "How is the budget reflecting whatever objectives are out there?" And that'll be the city manager's job to try to balance everything out and say, "I think this is what I read," and then we go from there. So with that, I just want to make sure that anybody that feels disenfranchised, and I know I got a letter earlier and there was some controversy about it, I just want to encourage folks to not feel disenfranchised. And if they do, you know, I'm happy to, as Councilor Sarmiento said, I'm happy to meet with them, I'm happy to talk. I want to make sure that there isn't any specific group, you know, for whatever reason, whether they have paid organizers or have a particular mission, that make others feel that they're getting more attention than the rest of the city. Because I believe the city council is here to listen to all residents, whether you're in an organization, in a neighborhood association, or whether you're an individual that has some kids here in the city, or not. You could be a senior citizen, you have a plan. I think we have to have our ears open to every single resident of the city. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Do you think a motion is acceptable?
Well, I thought Michelle had one earlier, and Councilor Sarmiento. All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Let's now go on to the next item. And, look, and the reason I don't like the clapping is this is a place where we have decorum, and I know Councilmember Tina Hadrow, Mayor Pro Tem, was just joking around earlier, but no, but in general, I think it's important how we conduct ourselves, and that means the audience as well. I think teaching each other's with the respect.
This is a special occasion. We could take an applause.
We can always go to a party, and they say Councilwoman Martinez is good at parties, and we'll clap there, yes? So with that, let's move forward. What's our next item? 75A is this time place for a public hearing. I want to now have staff make a presentation. It involves three parcels, 28 condominiums at 4226 4306 West Fifth Street. Urban Land LLC is the applicant, and I'll turn it over to staff for a presentation, and then I'll bring it, I'll open up the public hearing after that. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I know you've had a big night, a lot of exciting things. We'll go ahead and move through these as quickly as we can. This is for a project that you've actually already approved through first reading. It's a 28-unit project on Fifth and New Hope. That's proposed to be developed by City Ventures. I'm sorry. The project background, this was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in September of last year, moved on to the city council where that was also recommended for approval and first reading occurred. And then after that, we received a letter from an individual, they were not a community member, had never been associated with the project, had no interest in the project, but they questioned the adequacy of the environmental analysis. And so in an abundance of caution, we went back, prepared a negative declaration, went back through the approval process again to the Planning Commission, and the negative declaration didn't find any significant impacts, and so now we're back to you here again tonight to rehear the project. Just as a quick refresher to you, this project site is the old Calva Dairy, right here on Fifth Street, with New Hope being here to the west. It's about, almost a three-acre site. It's mostly vacant today. It's in a very blighted and deteriorated condition. Oh, I'm so sorry. As we had said before, it's a 28-unit small lot.
It wasn't you, Karen, she got a cramp in her leg, so. It wasn't what you were saying.
Okay. People sometimes run from the room when the planner gets up, so I understand. So it's a small lot detached, for sale residential community. Good things about this, it brings the property inconsistency with the general plan for the area, which is residential. It improves the street frontage by adding a landscaped parkway and sidewalk.
Karen, if you can make it brief, because you did bring it up, and some of us remember.
Okay, you got it.
So let's just see if there's any folks that want to speak.
Okay, I'll just go right through to the recommendation, and we'll go from there, be done with it. We just recommend all of these actions to, again, approve the project and any questions.
All right. So with that, let me open up the public hearing. We have Ralph Nichols, I believe it is, or Nichu, that wishes to speak. Or Randy, is it Randy or Ralph? Randy Nichu, from Laguna Hills, 24310 Molton Parkway. So let me assume that that person is no longer here. Does anybody else wish to address this on this item? Item 75A. Seeing no one, let me close the public hearing, bring it back to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Question.
Oh, we have a question? Go ahead. Councilmember Vena, are you there?
I know we discussed this before. I just have a couple of questions for clarification, and it was helpful, I think, to get more of the renderings on, I think, some of what may have been missing last time, I remember, as far as architectural design and such.
Yes, we didn't have these images last time.
So, the size of the parcels?
The size of the parcels are around 2,500 square feet.
Okay, that's fair. And as far as amenities, we're looking at just a small park, right? Or a playground? Is it even a playground? It's just?
It's a passive park.
Which one of those is that, the one on the southern, the bottom part of the?
Right. It's as you see right there to the bottom of the site plan in the green at the terminus of the entry street.
Okay. And most of the other, the areas around are attached, basically, we have more, higher-density attached multifamily condominiums in, I think, Ridge Cross Street to the-
Immediately to the south, it's a mobile home park.
Right.
And then attached, mostly around it, higher density.
They're all gated, right there primarily.
Some are, some are not. Right along the streetscape, it's actually just houses that face the street.
Okay, right.
And so these houses are also planned to face the street, but the interior of it does have a gate as you come in.
Okay. Okay, I know we talked about it, and I've mentioned before, I think with this one, and I know that it's planned to be gated, it is consistent with some of the other larger communities that are there.
But it's up to you.
But in general, you know, I think where we can avoid gates and just have more open communities that are open to just a broader, more connected, basically, to the broader area.
Sure.
I think it's better that gates, it's more suburban. What you might find South Orange County, other places, that's fine for them, we're more of an open, more knit city. And so I generally prefer that we look at that.
You can make that change if you like.
Well, you know, it's something that, what, let's, that would be something that I think would be, again, better fit for the city as a whole. But what I'd like to do is just as recommendations, to go back, have staff go back, discuss with the applicant, whatever we decide here today, if we approve or not, it sounds like we may, but to have that consideration and see whether that modification might make more sense.
Okay.
So with that, that addresses my questions.
So you made a friendly amendment to the motion, or anything? Because we already have a motion.
Right. No, I did not make a direct-
All right. So just a comment for staff.
Just a comment. Actually, one other thing is, I know that's a passive park, actually, a question to follow up. Are there any amenities, other than as far as barbecue areas or picnic area, or is it just green space that's given to people?
No, no, within the passive park, there's a grilling area, there's seating. It's not just a piece of grass, it's actually going to be very nicely landscaped, hardscaped, with places to sit and relax.
Okay. You know, and I ask because obviously, the more amenities that there are, the more attractive it is to residents. This is for sale.
It's all for sale, yes.
Right. And it just makes it so people are more vested, and typically, you know, there's a greater chance of the community continuing to be upcat and such.
Sure.
When there are a few amenities, it becomes less desirable and such, so with that.
So with that, we already have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now we go on to item 75B. This is time and place for the public hearing. You consider approving zoning ordinance, really, this for regional commercial centers and attractions. It's a sign-up program. Can we have a brief presentation, please?
Yes. This is a recommendation to amend the sign ordinance to allow a new program that would allow large commercial centers and attractions to exercise their creativity and unique identification needs and really design their own custom sign programs. We identified the need for more flexible signage for things like the mall, the Discovery Science Center, some larger office campuses. We took that to the Planning Commission, back to the Development Transportation Committee, got some more feedback from them, added the provision to allow for digital signs as part of these larger sign programs. Yay. And we're back now to you to take a look at this ordinance. It establishes these new categories of businesses that can take advantage of creating their own sign programs, allowing them to put together custom-designed programs. It requires review and approval by the Planning Commission, and it would also be confirmed then and notification given to the city council. And it includes some standards for these new electronic signs, just to make sure they don't cause any traffic safety concerns or light and glare intrusion into neighborhoods and residential areas. Just a few images, these are some commercial images. The technology has come such a long way for digital signs. They're really now an accepted part of major identification programs for shopping centers and other large attractions. They aren't the old technology that I've seen, that we've all seen, that a lot of people find very objectionable. The standards that are available now and all of the automatic features that these signs have can make them very easy to control, very attractive, and very exciting, and add a whole new dimension to commercial centers and other attractions. These are just a couple of images where they could also be used in public settings like a museum. We would like to recommend to you tonight as well, two small modifications to the ordinance. These are not major policy issues, they're really more some language tweaks. They were an oversight from a previous draft that we would recommend to have changed. The first is to delete the requirement that there be no more than one sign along a freeway frontage. And then the other is to change the language that governs the way that images can shift and change on the signs themselves. And aside from that, we recommend adoption of Resolution ZOA number 2013-2, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, entertain the motion to move the item.
No, 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 I have to do the public hearing and open it first, but thank you. This is now time and place where I'm going to open up the public hearing. Item 75B. Greg Berwin from Westfield Main Place. If you're here, please come forward, sir. As long as she doesn't have a lot of comments at the end, we'll be okay. Okay, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. My name is Greg Berwin. I am the Development Director for Westfield Main Place, so I'm working on the transformation of Westfield Main Place. First, I'd like to thank city staff, you know, specifically Karen, Vince, and Ally for all their work and leadership on the proposed amendment to the planned sign program. The result is a well-thought-through plan that should spur economic development and revenue in the city, as similar plans implemented in other cities have shown. Westfield supports staff's and planning commission's recommendation to approve zoning ordinance number 2013-02 in order to implement certain revisions to the planned sign program ordinance. Westfield has experienced firsthand the transformation that a catalytic sign program can make to a shopping center. Just up the freeway, Westfield Culver City underperformed in every way, to the point that it was at the bottom of Westfield's national portfolio in terms of revenue, traffic, and other important metrics. However, in 2009, the city of Culver City implemented a planned sign program that allowed Westfield to completely revamp the signs on its property and add signs along the 405 freeway. The signs create an identity for the shopping center visually and help the center and the tenants inform potential customers of the latest happenings at the center and products offered, which helped lead to an incredible transformation of the center. Now the center is doing double the sales per square foot compared to what it used to do. Revenue, the number of shoppers, and the energy at the center have increased dramatically. The introduction and implementation of San Ana's sign program presents a similar opportunity, not just for Main Place, but at other destination sites in the city. Placemaking and catalytic development cannot occur without an identity. The larger vision and cohesion around a particular place unites people and creates a community. It allows people to look with fresh eyes at neighborhoods, streets, buildings, museums, and shopping centers. The city's strategy of allowing certain property owners to submit an application for an entire sign program instead of on a one-off basis or through various variances allows the designers, owners, and city to understand the look and feel of the opportunity and to work together. Upon passage of the sign program, Westfield stands prepared to move forward with a comprehensive sign program package that should transform Main Place. We look forward to the changes that we anticipate will allow Westfield to communicate a sense of place and visually show the public all that Main Place has to offer. This combined with the planned reconfiguration of the currently empty Macy's box, which should be under construction very shortly, yes, will help create a rebirth for Westfield Main Place. Thank you. So I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Yeah, just be available. If we have any, we'll call upon you.
Okay.
So with that, is there anybody else that wishes to address the city council on this matter before I close the public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and now I'll bring-
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any comment?
Question for staff.
Okay, please go ahead.
The regulations that we have here, will it allow for any type of arrangements if one of the, particularly the freeway-facing signs or businesses that would apply for a sign, for them to promote the city, for us to request for them to have, is it, does it, what does it speak to? What does the item that we're looking at here, how does it speak to that?
There is actually a provision within the standards that says that the city can work with the applicant to allow for public service announcements to be placed on these boards.
Okay, so that would come, be worked out, basically, during application process?
Yes, it's not a requirement, but it's to say that if they would like to work with the city to do that, that's an allowed type of content that could be on the sign.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so with that, those, please go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick. I just want to thank Karen, and I want to thank our city manager who worked with the Development Subcommittee on this, and my colleagues on that committee. I know we saw this a while back, so, look, this is a great first step because I remember in the words of our previous city manager, "Over my dead body." Well, look, I'm glad it's not over anybody's dead body, it's just progress. We're moving into a different phase in, you know, in the city's life and in technology, and thank you to the people from Westfield. But, look, this has big possibilities for the entire city. We're very excited because a lot of times, cities saw freeways severing the city as a negative. Well, actually, this can be an upside. This could be a way of information for our residents and information for people who are visiting our city, and a way to attract people to the city. So I see this as a great first step. Again, this is phase one of what we hope will be a three-phase process where we can start addressing billboards. Next, digital billboards, which will create a net reduction in the number of signs that we have through the city and reduce blight. Then maybe we look at onsite, you know, billboards and marquees that will help as well. So I'm very excited. I, you know, I know that we spoke about Amendment One, which is very important because you have Westfield right next to Discovery Science Center. Well, both could be eligible, and they're both right next to one another, so it's, I'm glad that we're passing with that amendment. So it's I'm glad that we're passing with that amendment, and I know that Karen, you're going to make sure that we, as we go through the discretionary approval process, it'll be similar to CUP, which will go to the commission and also to the council. So as long as the the ordinance is worded that way, I'm very supportive. I think somebody made a motion. If they did, if they did, I'll second it wholeheartedly.
I think we did. Councilmember Reyna, please.
I guess question for staff, and I apologize for not hearing the entire presentation, but it's my understanding that currently there's no minimal requirements of the signed owners to put any type of public service announcements or promoting services within the city.
That's correct. The sign program that we have right now restricts the messages that you have on your signs to just advertising the businesses that are onsite. So this will open up an opportunity now for the city to have public service announcements or other sorts of content. And with a static sign, of course, you can't change the copy, but with a digital sign you can. So that opens it up for more opportunities for the city to have promotions and other information.
In that aspect, are we looking at any any type of minimums? Like, we would like, I don't know.
No. We we're wanting to leave open the the flexibility, the creativity, but I think everyone we've talked to, they're more than interested in in working with us to allow the city to have some level of promotion on there.
You know, and as we go forward, I'd like to see some type of verbiage that would actually say that because the conversation can say one thing and say, yeah, we'll help you guys out. You can promote X amount, and down the line, something else happened. But if there's some verbiage that is in there, and I don't know what those minimums would be, but if there's some verbiage in there, I would be a little bit more help feel more comfortable with that. I think this is a great opportunity to do some branding for our community, highlight a lot of our strengths that that we have. I mean, I love the fact that we're the only city that has a zoo, but I think, again, there's got to be some minimums in there that that would allow us to promote our strengths and whatever those happen to look like. So as we move forward and then the negotiations or the conversations, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Benavides.
A question for both our inner plan director and our city attorney is is whether we can add some type of just general clause that would. I understand Councilman Reyna's point is that if if it's there just as a possibility, there isn't anything that necessarily, anything that we can that we can enforce that would make it so that we do have that opportunity to PSA's. I know at the auto mall, they have been agreeable to it. It is a significant concession, I think, that we'd be providing and allowing these businesses, whether it be Westfield, or whether it be a dealership, or whether it be another business. You know, at this point, if they're not allowed whatsoever, so, and this is what they want, it's going to promote their business, which is fantastic. We want that. But I think it would be great for us to to have some type of of clause included now in what we're looking to approve that would say that there would be some type of agreement that would be mutable mutually, or some some type of whether it be time or PSA or something that would be mutually agreeable as part of the, you know, as a requirement to approve for approval.
I think one way to handle this would be because it is does it does have to be a discretionary permit with conditions that we have the ability and the conditions to, on a case-by-case basis, stipulate what that level of of public service announcement should be. It might be different for different locations, so I think it would be difficult to establish a a minimum standard right now, but because it could go in a condition of approval that would be approved by the Planning Commission and confirmed by the City Council, we can ensure that that definitely does get in there and that you also have a chance to see it.
So recommendation for the maker of the motion is that we, a very minor modification is that they're not spelling out minimums or anything of that sort, but just saying that as part of the approval process, there will be some type of PSA with the city that, again, that would be mutually agreeable, or that, or I don't know, I guess it would be mutually agreeable if it's part of the the application process, but essentially because right now it's still open-ended. There's nothing there. It would be something I know as, you know, Ms. Luza's mentioning, when it comes to planning, it will be something that can be worked out as one of the conditions, but again, right now, it's it would be up to the kind of institutional memory of the people who's, you know, once Ms. Luza decides that, you know, she's, you know, whatever the case might be, moves on to be city manager somewhere, you know, then, you know, it's it's that's gone, you know.
Well, we we can draft language and put, but we'd have to do that in the ordinance tonight because it's your first reading, or you could direct it to come back. And you can draft language that says, you know, prior to approval of this particular electronic sign, staff may condition the project on obtaining some type of time element for public service announcements. You can do that. We would need to look at the ordinance language now, as I said, if you want to have the first reading.
There's a section of the ordinance right now that addresses this, and we can make it be more prescriptive than just open-ended. It says, "In addition to their on-premise advertising and identification purposes, the signs may be used for public service announcements or warning signs as requested and provided by the city of Santa Ana." But we can say the signs shall include.
But, you know, Mr. City Manager, I have a problem again when we go and start to.
Change from the dais.
This is stuff we could do during the week, and let's pull it, let's pull it.
Mayor, member of City Council, a couple of things. One, we should come back with a recommendation. I would tell you from experience, they will agree to anything you tell them. These signs are very, very lucrative, and if you ask for a public service announcement, they're going to give you the biggest yes you ever heard. But we should come back and give you a recommendation, not not here.
So continue.
So let's, how about a motion to continue this item so that it can come back?
Make a motion to continue.
Okay, we have a motion to second. The only thing I would add and caution is as we do this, let's just not look at that. But I know that Councilmember Sarmiento talked about, you know, we can do this with billboards, et cetera, et cetera. Let's just walk carefully because you can't go back on some of these things. And once you allow them, they become embedded, and then if it's not exactly what you thought it was, there's not enough money in the, this is extremely lucrative. Somebody's going to make a lot of money. And I mean, I would even like to see, and we were talking earlier about the strategic plan, may some kind of a tax or or something that generates money that can come back to help the community because I'm telling you, these are multi-million dollar, and therefore I'm not saying let's do 100 of them because we're going to make more money, but I'm saying let's be careful with this because it can be a benefit to the city or it can be a detriment.
Mr. Mayor, it took almost 20-something years to even get to where we are.
Understood.
So I mean, look, we're moving as slow as we possibly can.
And I want to make sure that that we do things right because you can't go backwards on some of these things. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed motion carries. Now, I think the city manager is going to bypass the traffic safety study program presentation.
I asked that we we table it to the next meeting. It's 10 o'clock, and there's some key issues there that I prefer to to table.
And I'd like to support the Mayor Protem's request. Look, if some folks want to stay on their own and 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 continue the meeting.
You've got to be kidding me.
That's okay.
After I mentioned earlier the issues that we have with fatalities here in the city in regards to traffic safety, we're at 6:00 already. We have more cars killing people today south than guns in our streets.
But Ms. Ms. Councilmember Martinez, we have taken a lot of major issues on tonight, and it's been a long meeting, and it and you don't want to make mistakes on something that's significant. And that's why it doesn't mean that we don't think it's important. It means that we want to be able to do this with a clear head. They used to do this at the school district, and they used to wear you out. Am I not, am I wrong, Mr. Reyna? To 11 o'clock at night, and you start making bad decisions. I prefer to table it and have a good discussion at the beginning of the meeting.
That's what we say with all study sessions, and we never fulfill, why even have, why even have study sessions? Every study session that we've had has not lasted more than 15, 20 minutes. We never go into any discussions. We never, staff puts these things together, and we just just bypass it because, look, I've been up since 3:30 this morning, and, look, the reality is this, that it's been agendized, this is what's on here, and, you know, continue matters because, you know, we're exhausted, whatever, have you, but this is what we're here for. We got to finish what we need to do. But if you want to go ahead and continue it, and you have the votes, go ahead.
All right, let me just say this. When we were doing study sessions initially, we didn't have a bunch of other items, and we used to do them at the community room. When we brought every meeting here, I knew this would happen. All of a sudden, the agenda is going to get populated, and all meetings are the same, and you really can't do study sessions, so maybe for another day to discuss, but maybe study sessions just don't work with this format because you're right. We we have a lot of stuff.
Mayor, it didn't work with the other format either.
Originally, it did.
You always want to go home. You always want to go home.
Originally, it did. We had.
Look, we got, we got, look.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
Mayor, this is where I get ticked off.
Please.
Because we all make a commitment to be elected and to serve the public, and we have a responsibility and an obligation.
And we do.
Because you want to go home.
And I'm suggesting a different program.
There's not right to the residents that are here that came to hear this.
I understand.
And so I'm going to be passionate about this.
I understand, I understand.
Because it's wrong.
I understand.
I don't, I don't think that it's a lack of of, you know what, to be honest with you, I'll be, I do want to go home. I have to, I have to administer Cassie testing at 7:00 in the morning. I do want to go home, and I do not want to sit here and have the study session at 10:10 at night and go till 10:45 and me miss something. So I'm just asking if the if the rest of the council wants.
Let's see where folks are at.
Maybe we should take it to a vote.
Yeah, but Mayor Protem, why don't you make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table it to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. How many opposed? One, no. Okay, so that motion carries, and and let's go from there.
I know it's after the fact, we already cast a vote, but I think, I understand Councilwoman Martinez, the, and it is an important matter, but I do think if it is important, then we should be able to, right now, and you know this is what would happen. We we take it up, and nobody says anything because everybody's exhausted. Our brain has been focusing on other on other key items, and we're not going to get the engagement and probably things that we could speak into a significant effort, significant project would not would not be taken up, would not be adopted because we don't have the energy or effort to it. So, but I do have a question, actually, and I missed asking it, but would we be able to bring this up at the next at the next meeting? Do we know yet as far as how loaded our next meeting will be?
We table it, and we can bring it to the next meeting and agendize it for the next meeting.
And maybe we agendize it earlier in the meeting if it's not too heavy an agenda. Try to do it earlier. All right, so with that, let's go to council comment, if we may.
Just very briefly, I know it's late. Think, I just want to thank staff and colleagues for helping us create this strategic plan. I think we're all very proud of how it turned out. Also, very quickly, this Saturday, March 22nd, is our first annual Plaza Primavera family event, Bring Your Children. Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center will have an arts and crafts table there. The Easter Bunny will be there for photo ops. Ballet Folclorico, Santa Ana High Drum Line, Anna Mariachi will be performing there. And I know someone mentioned earlier during staff during public comments that we're inclined towards entertainment, but this is, we're not excluding anybody else. This is just something new that we're starting and as as part of our strategic plan to include, oh, good, the time starts at 4:00. Thank you. I'm tired. But also, March 21st, the deadline for the Affordable Care Act, I think it's important that our families that have not signed up for it, log on to the website, coveredcalifornia.com, and look into getting affordable health insurance. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Reyna, please.
Keep it brief. Like always, we live in a desert, so please conserve as much as you possibly can. There's a few still holidays, even though we just finished St. Patrick's Day, so make sure you buy and shop in Santa Ana.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. It was great to hear about the plans at Westfield Main Place, the expansion and all that's coming up. There's a lot of different places within within town to shop, so I wanted to encourage, I do want to encourage folks to support local businesses, whether it be Main Place, whether it be downtown, South Coast area. One restaurant that I did want to mention that I that I went have gone to a couple of times, just opened up, three guys who grew up in Santana, one in Santana Schools, just opened up a restaurant called The Civic, which is just west of, just east of Bristol and Civic Center. And it's a, it's a very neat spot. It's good food. Want to encourage folks to go out and and visit them. It's, the website is eats civic.com. Last thing I want to ask Mr. Mayor that we can adjourn, that we adjourn, and I'm going to, the name of Lee Hernandez, actually the brother of Zeke Hernandez, and I'm going to read a little bit about Lee, who's from originally here from Santana, born April 24th, 1948. He passed away on March 11th, just a few days ago here, 2014. Again, he was born in the in the city, attended schools here within the city of Santana. He was, he served in the military, went to Vietnam War, and was there in 1967 and 19 through 1968. He owned a business here in town, EH Scaffolding Company, and when he passed, he was living in Bullhead City, Arizona. And the memorial services are pending, and I do ask that we do adjourn in his memory.
We happy to do so. Let's go to my right.
I don't have a comment tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I do have a couple of comments. One, I I want to start off this, you know, this issue, this traffic safety plan was supposed to be for a study session last month, and because issues happened with our staff, we moved it forward. You know, our mayor reviews, the chair reviews the agenda. If you knew we had such a, I'm not sure if you didn't review the agenda, and you knew what we had on here, working with our city manager, to make sure that you could have said, we shouldn't have this work-study session. You are the chair. You're supposed to review these.
I am.
You're supposed to review the agenda items. You did not do your job, and so now we're postponing this meeting again. And so I would advise, you know, us in the future, that it that you review the agenda, and if you think that it's very heavy, that you, while you're meeting with the city manager, indicate to him, maybe we shouldn't have this because we shouldn't be bypassing one study session to the next, over and over. We tend to do that a lot, just like we don't want to set policy up here, as Councilman Tina Hiddle mentions to us. We don't want to do this either, carry things over, over, and over again, like if these issues are not important.
I agree with you, but let me say this, and then I'll let you continue. You know, the agenda is really set by the by the manager and by the staff. We all have input. I have input. And sometimes the length of the meeting is not a function of the agenda. Sometimes the length of the meeting is a function of us as council members and how much we want to engage. I've seen many meetings where you think the agenda's going to be relatively short, and and it goes very, very long. And but but I will sit with the city manager, try to figure out, is there a different mechanism for this? Because it is often the case that no matter how light the agenda is, you know, between presentations and everything that we do, by the time we get to the study session, the freshness is definitely gone, and and I think that's a point well taken, and this is an important issue. But I think, you know, the the council voted, you know, 6-1 to postpone it, I think mainly because of the fatigue factor. But, you know, maybe that we can put study sessions early or really have a lot of discipline in not putting anything on the agenda except the study session on the second meeting, and maybe we can make some progress, and I'm willing to work with you on that. Please continue.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The next question I I have, and would like to give some direction to our staff, is I, yesterday I was at the Lowell P.O. Pico Neighborhood Association, and they had me and and various of our staff members address the issue of of the produce trucks and the issues, the other issues that we face with the catering trucks, and I've brought in this issue up within the public safety. We also had the county present yesterday, and what I would like for us to do is to to start the process, and I know our city attorney is going, you know, is is doing a comprehensive report and possibly will be meeting with, you know, one of the city, one of the attorneys that we're dealing with, with a certain group. But what I want us to do, because we have a lot of of code enforcement issues and even issues with the county, is is to create a a task force of the city staff and county staff and see how we could address some of these issues currently that we can fix together, but we haven't had that ongoing communication with one another. One example is this, is that the county yesterday said that these trucks are supposed to be going to commissaries every single day by the end of the night. The reality is that most of these trucks barely run, and so, and they're giving them permits, and so those are questions that we need to work with with the county healthcare agency, and they offered as well to be part of this task force. And so my request is, is that we can get our staff here and to meet with the county staff and with Supervisor Janet Nguyen as well, who's been playing a role with this, and see what we can do on their end and what we can do on our end to help remedy this issue. But at the same time, I would like to see our city attorney to see what is it that we're going to do with the other issue that we face with the other group of folks and and the attorney that they have. So that is all I have, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Martinez, Councilmember Vince Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You almost forgot my name.
No, 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 no. You're the only Sarmiento up here.
I just wanted to call our battalion chief up just for a few minutes, if he could come to the podium. By the way, welcome, because I don't think I was able to give you a formal welcome last time, but in the past, I think it was maybe 30 to 45 days, we had an unfortunate incident with a T-shirt that was circulated and sold by some fire officers from OCFA, not in Santa Ana, but done outside the city. I believe that the intent wasn't malicious on their part, at least from what we've been
I believe that the intent wasn't malicious on their part, at least from what we've been told by agency members, and I'll take everybody at their word. The problem is that I think the community may have misinterpreted the meaning, and I think it's, I was offended by it, you know, personally, I don't think it was a good message. I think maybe whoever did it may not have been thinking, but it's regrettable, because my concern is that you all as an agency and fire staff in general, they're just, they have such a special relationship and bond with our residents. People trust firemen and women. It's very unique, the type of relationship that we have, and I'd hate for that to be deteriorated or decayed as a result of something that was just not well thought out, and I know that we've received apologies on behalf of OCFA executive staff, but really, what I think could be helpful is maybe just a public apology to the residents in general, because I know it was unintended, so I just wanted to give you the floor in the event that you wanted to go ahead and extend something.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, I'd really like to address the community. I've been with the city for thirty-five years, I've been in the fire service for thirty-seven years now, and to be honest with you, I'm actually ashamed to be up here for the first time in my career, and the reason is because I'm usually here for the intent of promoting the fire service, but this time, this unfortunate incident in what appeared to be a mock towards the city of Santa Ana and the, and the community is embarrassing. I sincerely apologize on behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority, I apologize on behalf of the fire service, because this is not a reflection upon the professionalism that we represent. We will always serve the community, we will always give a hundred and ten percent, and to be honest with you, I am very upset that I'm up here, and I'm upset because I'm up here for the wrong intent. So I hope that council, mayor, and especially the community of this fine city and the progress that it's making, I'm proud, but unfortunately, this is one of the very few, if not the rarest moment in my career, that I actually have to stand up here with humility to give you and the community of this city an apology. So I hope you accept it, I give it to the community, the community that's out there, council, and I deeply regret and I apologize on behalf of this organization.
Well, thank you, Chief, and I'm sure that we're going to have many other good, positive things, because ninety-nine percent of our relationship has always been positive. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your professionalism, we want to put this issue behind us because we have so many more important things that we have to do together, so I appreciate you taking the time and taking the responsibility on behalf of the entire agency and on behalf of the community, we thank you for that public apology. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think that's it, so I'm going to adjourn as requested in memory of Lee Hernandez, and we're adjourned till our next regularly scheduled meeting.